Good evening. Welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, January 4th, 2022 at 5:32 PM. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Grant. Kay.
Present.
Commissioner Katz.
Here.
Ramalas. Commissioner Penserga.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'd invite Pastor Jose Rodriguez from First Baptist Boynton to come to the podium to provide us with the invocation and ask everyone to please stand, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Romulus.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this meeting. We thank you for this new year that you've given us. We pray that you would bless us this year. We pray that you would be with the mayor, that you would be with the people that are working here at the city hall, and also with the people of Boynton Beach, that you would come for hearts that are saddened, that you would come for those who are suffering. Father, they would find comfort in you, in you alone. We pray that we would draw closer to you this year, that we would leave aside all the things that are holding us back from seeking you and your wisdom. We pray that you give us wisdom as we try to navigate the different things that we deal with in life, and Father, we trust that you will do that in every day. We thank you once again for this meeting, and we pray that you bless it and that it would be a great and fruitful time. We pray for this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda approval, additions, deletions, or corrections. One of the things that I'd like to add to tonight's agenda that was on for last meeting's future agenda was a discussion regarding renaming of the urban orchard, that is item 13H to tonight's meeting, because it was spent, it was supposed to be for tonight's meeting. I spoke with Latasha, so I don't think there's anything that's changed. And I'd like to have the conversation with the commission at that time, at tonight's meeting.
Mayor, based on the events that we're going to be discussing this evening, I think we can move that item to another time. I would not like to have two items of that type in one night.
Okay. Well, if there is no motion to put it on tonight's meeting, and then the second thing I would want is that, do we want to move up item 9A, which is approved notice of funding opportunities?
Mayor.
Yes.
What I would prefer to propose is simply, if the commission would be agreeable to that, moving all of our items of business ahead of public comments. That way, we allow for us to conduct the business of the evening and then allow for plenty of time for the members of the public to express their thoughts to us this evening. So, we should be able to be able to do all the business that we need to do tonight.
I disagree. I think people came here, and we normally have public comments first, but if you have a second for that motion?
We have a rather short agenda.
That we move the public comments?
That the request from Commissioner Romulus is to move public audience behind all other items on business, to put it behind 9A.
Oh.
Chair, I was gonna request the opposite, to put public comment first, so that those who've come can kind of speak their piece, and then business they might not be here for would be concluded afterward.
And I would agree with that, that we should move it up rather than back, so that we don't have to maintain everybody here so long.
I support that.
Okay. So, I have a motion to move up public audience in front of announcements, is what you're requesting?
No more.
Second.
Okay. And I did not get a motion for my request to speak on the items for Latasha.
And Mayor, I placed one item before you. I just sent a late email out this afternoon to discuss fees related to this weekend's events. That would be appropriate for the commission to discuss.
We will put the item regarding that and the city manager report 9B.
Thank you.
And at future agenda time, I'll put some items for future agenda. There's no other comments or concerns. May I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time.
Commissioner Romulus?
My comments are simply belated. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody. Happy New Year to everyone. I do believe that we are, this is a somber time for us here in the city of Boynton Beach, but regardless, it is a new year, and I do want to make sure I wish everybody a healthy and prosperous new year 2022. Thank you, everyone. That's it.
Commissioner Penserga?
I have no disclosures at this time.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I did meet with Centennial for, about the JaFaire, which I attended, and that they had good results from that. It was held at Ocean Breeze East. I also attended the, this was put on by Ceron Allen, where he teaches his kids about the blues of all things. It's the Anya Fernando Jones International Blues Kids Camp, which was held right here at our children's museum. They had about 15 kids that sang songs and played instruments, and he's looking to open that up in Boynton Beach for more of our kids, to teach them the significance and the history behind the blues. And I would like to have this letter that was written to us by Ceron Allen to be added to the city's record. Very good letter. That's it.
Thank you. So, as for myself, this past week, I was there on Sunday, December 26th, when Stanley Davis Jr. had his motorcycle incident. And I made some comments and statements, and so I want to clarify that for the record. First and foremost, my heart goes out to the families and friends of Stanley Davis Jr. and everyone involved. Second, I apologize to the city, community, and the police for my incomplete statement, as the media and press have taken my words out of context and created untrue statements. I would like to say, the city and police are responsible for a thorough and diligent investigation. There needs to be transparency and accountability. Our community must put safety and education as a priority. So, I am deeply sorry for any negativity that has come up because of my statements, and that I look forward to working with each and every one of you for a better Boynton Beach. And if there's no more informational items?
Mayor.
Yes?
I would like to as well just express my condolences to the Davis family. As a mother of two young boys, I can't imagine what the family must be going through, so I just, I want to make sure that I express my heartfelt just thoughts and prayers with the family. I know that at times like this, when we're grieving, thoughts and prayers just sound so empty, and just coming out of my mouth, it doesn't feel like it's enough, but I want to make sure that just as a mother to, a mother and two parents, that I simply send my sympathy, my condolences, and a warm embrace to the family. And I know that this does not bring your son back. It does not bring, does not make the situation better, but I simply just want to, from a human to another human, just express my deep-felt condolences to the family and to everyone affected. With that being said, those are my comments, and I hope that as a community, we can come together from this tragic loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Romulus. There's no more informational items by members of the city commission?
Mayor.
Yes.
I had some prepared statements about the situation, and I wasn't sure whether we do that now or after public comments.
This is where we have the ability to speak, to inform the public.
I wanted to speak on the topic, and I put something together to make sure I express where I'm coming from and how this has impacted all of us. Stanley Davis Jr., S.J., is a son of this city, a son of Boynton, and he is one of our own. S.J. has a family who loves him, friends and teammates who believe in him, an entire community that is standing with him. He was taken away from us, and as a community, we stand here today not only to grieve his loss, to let the world know who S.J. was, but also to say that we will not let his death be in vain. They say that there is no greater pain than when a parent loses a child. I saw that firsthand at the vigil, his mother crying, heartbroken by the loss of her son. It was unbearable, and the sorrow, the frustration, the anger was felt and shared by everyone. Ms. Shannon, although there is nothing I can say to you to take away your pain, to bring S.J. back, I want you to know that my prayers are with you and your family, and I took your words to heart that night. You said you didn't want anything but for the community to stand by you. I'm standing by you. We're standing by you. With prayer, family, and the truth, our community can begin to heal. Like many of you, I have so many unanswered questions. That is why we're going to see this investigation through, so we know exactly what happened and prevent this from ever happening again. That's how we bring justice for S.J. This investigation must be swift, decisive, thorough, and impartial, and we will accept the conclusions wherever the facts may fall. Nothing will be swept under the rug. That is my commitment to you and to the community, and we will let justice run its course. I pray for S.J. and his family, and that healing comes to all of us. Healing born out of truth, of justice, of transparency, and accountability, and through the outpouring of love of so many of you that we can see here today, by the entire community. Again, my condolences to you and your family.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I too would like to echo everything that my fellow commissioner, Ty just, Ty Penserga just said. My heart bleeds. But first of all, let me, let me say my heart goes out to the parents of S.J. I offer up my prayers and my condolences to S.J.'s father, Mr. Stanley Davis Jr., his mother, Mrs. Shannon Thompson, his grandmother, Ms. Tina Hunter, and also to S.J.'s godmother, Ms. Mary Barbara Nelson. I have three grandkids myself. I too have lost my only son at an early age, so I can identify with you. Our community is grieving and upset. Let it be said, I'm also upset. Upset that a 13-year-old kid's life has been lost. A kid that had so much potential. I've reached out to the family, but have not been able to make a connection. I've left messages. I want to let you know, as Commissioner just stated, that we will get to the bottom in this case. We all want answers about what led up to this crash, but I want to encourage everyone to let the investigation run its course. This is an open investigation. The FHP, the Florida Highway Patrol Agency, will find the facts. I want to see peace in our city between the community and the police department. We do want justice, accountability, and transparency. We're going to follow the facts and not get ahead of ourselves. Let us continue to work together. I'm going to continue to reach out to the family. We're going to continue to work together. God bless you. My prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more informational items, we'll move forward with the public audience. I'll invite individual speakers to the podiums. We have one on the left, one on the right, if you'd like, and I'll go back and forth. In addition, I'll ask John to open up the raise hand icon. And do we have the timer? Clicker. Oh, there it is. And so, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record at the beginning, and then I'll start the timer.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Shannon Thompson. My address is 425 Southeast 1st Street, Pompano Beach, Florida, 33060.
May I begin, the timer?
Okay. First of all, I would like to go ahead on the record and clarify my son's name. His name is Stanley Dell Davis III, not Junior, please. He's the third. I also would like to say, we are here for justice for all. We would like some accountability, some transparency, and we would like a thorough investigation to be conducted. This disconnect with the community and the police force has been going on for far too long. We would like to unite as one. There's no reason why our children should even fear law enforcement or even particular law officers. I would also like to add to that, as a part of this investigation, I would also like, as you say, not getting into the logistics of this case, but also ensuring that the policy that the law enforcement have in place is being abided by. There has been other incidents that have occurred prior to this, where it seems as if law officials, they have policies and procedures and regulations that are there in place for a reason. If they're not going to abide by it, how can they expect the citizens to abide by it? Some things have been overlooked, overturned. That needs to be brought to justice. My son will bring forth a lot of things that have been swept under the rug for far too long, that have been dismissed. These Boynton Beach Police Officers, probably some of them feel that they have been getting away with things for too long, because they have not had to answer to some of their unjust actions and behaviors. This is going to bring light and should shed light on some of the male practices that they have been displaying within the community, and that's what we're here for, to do it peacefully. And that's all I want to be said at this moment. I thank you all for coming out. I thank you for taking the time to hear what I had to say.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Tina Hunter. I'm S.J.'s grandmother, and I would just like to say, when that cop saw S.J. out there getting his gas, he could, he knew that was a child right there in there. Why didn't he go over there and question S.J. right there in there? All this could have been avoided. I feel like that cop did exactly what he wanted to do, chased him to his during death. This harassment from the city, and it just started with S.J. death. It started years ago, from one of the redneck people on my corner used the police. They got busted for drugs. They was in a neighborhood where they had a business. They got busted for drugs. So, they came into my and that community and start blaming us as neighbors. But the cops say, well, ain't nobody in the neighborhood gave us the ups. They just looking for somebody to blame. So, if y'all know that, why y'all listen to them? S.J. couldn't even come outside and play as a kid like the other kids, because the cops riding up and down, up and down, trying to chase us back up in the house. They do it sometimes three or four times a day. Then court enforcement. I could be outside picking up grass, hey, go court enforcement, ride up and down, up and down, three, sometimes three or four times a day. Then they also put the sheriff department involved in it. Sheriff department ride up and down sometime on Ocean Avenue, looking at my house. This thing just started when S.J. got hit on that motorcycle. They had been harassing my kids for years. When Shannon was a kid, the police department, this was when all this mess started. It just continued when S.J. was born. He couldn't even play outside. His mother couldn't even play outside, because all because being racist. The redneck people on the corner got busted for drugs. They was just looking for somebody to blame. So, they used the police department to harass me and my children and my family. They even tried to take, had to try, call HRS and tried to take my kids away from me, but they couldn't find me guilty. The police know all this was going on, and they let it happen. Just like I said, this harassment, and it's still going on right now today. Even though those white people finally left the neighborhood, I got a guy standing across the street. He ran along with it. His name is David Moody. He's jealous because I let him in my house years ago. He came in to see how I live. I don't live like no bum. I keep my house clean and nice. He's jealous. So, every little thing he see me do around my house, he's calling the police, and the police riding up and down. They don't see nothing that you doing. So, why they keep playing up in this stupidity? John and Kathy gone, but he want to keep it going. And that Jamaican lady standing next door, she ran along with it. It just petty jealousy. And the police department is causing problems, because they playing into their stupidity instead of stopping them. My family been harassed for years, over 35, about 34 years. And S.J., it just continued with S.J. He could come outside and play. He couldn't be outside his own yard. Like I said, this stuff ain't just happened when he passed. This been going on for the police department, even as today, it's still going with the police department. They ride up and down my house, up and down. I'm not no criminal. I'm just a hard-wrecked woman. I ain't never, I don't deal with no drugs and that. I'm just a hard-wrecked woman. The lady who there sitting there taking her side, Kathy, she was the drug addict. She couldn't even work. She was a dysfunctional drug addict. That's who y'all should have been questioning. I'm just a hard-wrecked woman. They just did it because she was a white woman. John, she was just, and she just was John's living girlfriend. She was just a drug addict. I'm not no drug addict. They riding up and down my house like I'm some kind of criminal, at my own house, trying to force me off my own property for all the other kids are playing.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, this could have been avoided, when he saw S.J. to that gas station. This could have been avoided. Why you go chase him to his death when it could have been avoided?
I'm gonna ask you. Thank you.
My name is Chloery Lucille Brown. My address is 112 Northeast 16th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm S.J.'s auntie. We had us to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I like that, especially the part liberty and justice for all. Where's the justice for S.J.? This guy, you got this guy saying Marcy's Law, but S.J.'s name is posted all over, posted all over the news, posted all over the, everywhere. Well, Mr. Mark Shaw, we know who you are. We know who you are, and I appreciate you for saying you're going to be thorough, but bullshit. I don't believe a word of it. My nephew is lying in his grave, and it hasn't hit home for you guys, because you don't have to deal with the daily harassment of the Boynton Beach Police Officers. You don't have to deal with the shit that we have to deal with on a daily basis. I'm sorry for my language. I'm through speaking. You have a great afternoon.
Good evening, good evening. Bishop Bernard Wright, current candidate for mayor of this city, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, Real Talk Radio with Minister Bernard Wright, and Robert E. Wells Foundation. We shouldn't be here. This should never have happened. I have had personal incidents with Mark Song, Officer Mark Song. We went through a lot of procedures. This dissonance record was so bad, it should have long been off before us, but what we are typing is systemic racism in this city and all over this country. It's not just about my grandson, me. I'm a parent first and foremost, and we all hurting today, and it should never have happened. Lot of procedures need to be changed. We're talking about equity. We're talking about systemic racism. Let's call it what it is. We're talking about right now giving Latasha Clemens a archet, we should have given her name on the fire department. Why did it take Georgia, the southern state, to make her chief? She should have been chief here in Boynton. Is it the small fox that spores divine according to the living word of God? We're looking over everything, but what is really, and that is racism in this city. It need to be turned upside down. We need effective leadership. I give my heart out to this family. We're grieving, but it should stop now, and yet swiftly, we should see transparency, justice, and total absolute accountability individually, respectively, from him to the department to the city. City manager, you have a great job. You get great funding. You manage this city. You hired them all. You shouldn't have never been here. We need revamping of this whole dais by the grace of God, and I thank God for the hand of God in this. What we see is a show of community support and love as we've never seen it before. Unfortunately, we see what is called real revival, the Spirit of God moving inside of Boynton Beach. It's time now to change your state of minds about people and get on this one spirit and law of love, that we love one another as he loved us, and that to the point of death. You got to doubt it yourself, one for another. Not an easy trip, but it's a trip that's necessary prerequisite. You won't get there outside of it. So, we're here today to show our collective force to see change for the better for the people in Boynton Beach. To God be the glory, and God bless everybody.
Ernest McNally, I live at 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407. I'm a long block from the incident, and as a matter of fact, I was out at that time, working on a Boynton Beach flooding story when it happened. And since that time, I've probably spent about 10 hours a day with public records, contacting the Boynton Beach Police, Inspector General, trying to reach the Florida Highway Patrol, trying to reach the city, the city manager, city attorney, city commissioners. And what's the result of all that effort, with all the effort I put in and documentation and familiarity I have with the neighborhood, with the street? There's blocking of everything. Not one person on this dais was willing to respond to me. Not one person, including the Public Information Officer for the Boynton Beach Police, Slater, who has, I'm also a press person, credentialed press person. So, when the Boynton Beach Police Public Information Officer gets a phone call, they're not allowed by press to pick what press they want to talk to and what they don't, especially knowing me as a neighbor there and knowing how familiar I am with this city and a lot of the departments, et cetera. And then all the documentation of hours in the street, walking, photographing, videoing, interviewing, and then, when it, when it was actually happening, and I approached, I was probably, it was a yellow line, you know, the tape that the police put up, and I was 250 feet behind it. And one of the Boynton Beach Police walked over to me and saw my press pass, and everyone is right by the line, taking pictures and everything and talking, and he said to me, let me see your press pass. Here it is. I showed it to him. He said, what's your name? He said, what's your name? I says Ernest McNally. He said leave. I said leave? I said leave, what do you mean leave? He says leave. I said, okay. So I, I walked away, about three hundred feet away where my car was parked. And I did my interviewing and my photoing. But it's a lot more than that. Is that timer correct? What do I have, ten seconds left? Okay, in my opinion, Boynton Beach Police, Florida Highway Patrol should be conflicted away from this case. This case belongs in a federal investigation. Okay, period.
Good evening, my name is Pastor Ray Whitley, 223 Northeast 12th Avenue. Uh, Boynton Beach Coalition stand in solidarity with the Davis family in their pursuit for justice for Stanley Davis III. We want to read into the record the letter from NAACP. Happy New Year and greeting from the South Palm Beach County Chapter of the NAACP. This time of year is always filled with the hope that we look forward to the promise of a prosperous new year. In that vein, we join the city of Boynton Beach and share the excitement of what the new year offers in terms to, to work in towards a more unified and tolerant Boynton Beach. However, we cannot enjoy the fruit of what is to come in 2022 until we unplant the seed of sorrow that were sowed in 2021. Unfortunately, one such seed of sorrow was planted on December 26, 2021, uh, 2021, when the life of young Stanley Davis III, a Boynton Beach son, tragically ended after being followed by an undutied Boynton Beach Police Officer doing an alleged traffic stop. While we're mindful of policies and procedures in place that the city has to follow as it is, as it investigates the event of December 26 and the officer's involvement, we as a community and organization and a race simply ask that the city of Boynton Beach conduct a thorough and transparent investigation. All too often, these investigations are merely rubber stamped by officials seeking merely to meet the most minimal standards. We're asking that the city of Boynton Beach rise above the bureaucratic red tape and to do what is just equitable and right. There are some organizations whose interests are not aligned with transparency and accountability. These organizations seem, seek to use their political and financial influence to pervert truth and distort this narrative. To counter these influences, the South Palm Beach County Chapter of the NAACP has joined with the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy, Faith in Florida, the Palm Beach County Black Caucus, and Unify the Palm Beaches, and collectively raise our voice as a supporter of truth and justice and seek to work with city staff and officials to prevent any actions that may hinder transparency. By reviewing police union contracts with city and weigh it against city personnel rules and policy along with state statutes to find ways to prevent the union contract from blocking the accountability process. Two, review the city's police department policies and procedures and practices to make recommendations that will lead to improve the relations between the police department and the black community.
Mr. Whitley.
The city of Boynton Beach.
If you'd like, you can give us the, the paperwork.
Showed great courage.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop talking, your time is up.
To lead the investigation. However, we want to ensure this is not influenced by any entity at all. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to forging a meaningful working relationship with the city of Boynton Beach, and we seek to maintain peace and unity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shamari Davis. I would like to start by saying, it is utterly disgusting how Mark does not want his name mentioned at all, but we will forever know his actions that took place on the 26th of December. We'll know his actions, we'll feel them, we'll dwell in them for years to come. But I don't just want to talk about all the negative stuff in the case or anything that's going on. I want to talk about SJ's life. SJ was very happy. He traveled. He liked to go outside, ride bikes with his friends. He's been riding bikes since he was four. He liked to do everything. He liked to help out around the house. He liked to make everybody laugh, even when his jokes weren't funny. His laugh was contagious though, so you would laugh anyways. He was starting to fill out, he was starting to get his own personality. He recently cut off his dreads because he wanted to wear his hair shorter. He hated getting his hair done. I think that was the real reason though. He, he was just starting to, you know, like girls and stuff, starting to get his own little personality. He wasn't just like, oh, well, my mom and my dad likes this. He was really into SJ likes this. He's gonna do what SJ likes to do. He was starting to get taller, finally. We thought she was gonna be short. He was so happy when he got taller than me. He liked to rap. I thought he couldn't rap, but he liked to rap anyways. He liked to listen to songs in the shower, songs nobody knew. But he would blast them anyways. He liked dogs. He was just starting to, you know, make some of his own money, being independent, not always having to ask for stuff. I still ask for stuff, I ain't got no job. SJ, he has some money. He was a very funny and loving guy. If you went out with him, you have no money, didn't matter. If he said we're hungry, we're hungry, so I'm gonna pay for it anyways. He never let me pay for nothing. He was a very protective young man. He was everything and more, I swear he was. It sucks that this happened to him because he didn't deserve it at all. But SJ always had a higher and greater purpose for everything. We just didn't understand that this is what it took for us to see his greater purpose. But we see it, and we're gonna follow it, and we're gonna make sure that we keep it living forever. Thank you for listening to me speak.
Hello, my name is Corey Redon. Address is 631 Evergreen Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida. I am the father of Jaden Redon. The accident that took place in February 2016 on a minor road. Very upsetting to hear that it's the same cop that chased the suspect and hit my son, that was five. Would have been eleven. And I know y'all got power to, um, to, uh, do something with this guy to straighten out whatever y'all need to straighten out. Um, of course, you know, we the people, we got questions and answers. We, we, we need answers. Um, something has to be done, this has to be stopped. This was really heartbroken and just very devastating hearing this, um, you know. And when I found out about it, uh, I had to reach out to the family as soon as possible because they're going through the same thing, you know. And, um, I'm not gonna never see my son again, grow up, do whatever you're supposed to do. You know, I don't want to make this so much about my son, but this is the third time, you know. 2012, 2016, 2021, with the, with the same guy. This has to stop. Saying make no sense. It has to stop, so I really hope that y'all do something so this can stop. Cause we can't, can't keep going on like this, you know, stuff like this. Yes, I do have three other kids, you know, that miss their brother dearly. One was on the scene, the other one came from the scene, you know. So, and for me to have to come from where I come from, to drive, to find out that my son was no longer gonna be here, and then for Mr. Davis to come from where he come from, or whatever, to see his son out there, whatever, with the same guy, you know. Thank you. I, I, I just really hope that, you know, y'all do something and, and that all this that is taking place, that this really means something, you know. Thank you.
Reverend Javon Davis, pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 900 North Seacrest Boulevard in the city of Boynton Beach. This evening, I stand before you, not just representing the members of the St. John Missionary Baptist Church, but also standing to represent the Peace Organization of Palm Beach County, which consists of over twenty churches that come together to ensure that social justice needs are met. We stand here in support of this family. We recognize that it is imperative that we do a thorough investigation in regards to this tragedy. Quite frankly, it is a tragedy that should have never happened. I am now put in the position of having to, to open up our church for a funeral service that we really should not have had to open our church up for. This young man should still be here. And we want to make certain that another SJ does not lose his or her life because of senseless behavior. I don't want to see another child rolled into St. John Missionary Baptist Church because a parent, parents of community has to say farewell to them because of the relationship between police and community. As an organization, we have been adamant about making certain that this relationship is one in which the community and the police can trust one another. The slogan is that police is here to protect and serve, not protect and control. It would be a beautiful thing if we can all just work together. If we can get along with one another, if we can make certain that policies and procedures that are in place are followed for everyone. Not just for us in the community, but even those who are called to enforce the policies and procedures. And so I'm asking the commission to join this community as we cry out for your help, as we cry out for you to stand alongside us in our efforts to make sure justice rolls down like a mighty stream. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Wesley Shula, 606 West Atlantic. Um, it's very sad that we in this situation. But we really have to sit down and ask ourselves, as commissioners, mayors, and the city manager. Well, we know that the city manager run the city at the day-to-day operation. But she's not in the field, but she's need to know that the police, the city of Boynton Beach is very out of control. I dealt with them when I was twenty years old. And then with the dirt bikes and the situation with them flying through neighborhoods, not stopping, not looking for nobody. August of 2021, they was just chasing somebody in a residential neighborhood. And I got it on my phone. And they, they ain't never looked and see if somebody was coming out or a child was rushing out out in the side of the neighborhood. Now, the city manager need hold up. I know that the, the chief just came on board, but he need to clean house. And that's what need to happen. As you the mayor, Steve, I know your term is about to run out, but I won't put too much trust in them saying that they gonna do the investigation that they need to do. If I was you today, I will call for the inspector general to come in and look at all the complaints that they had, all the lawsuits, and that's how you start your investigation. Because Boynton Beach is out of control. And they just had got into with another situation the other day and just slammed somebody on the concrete. And, and see, this is what we saying. People got stuff on video. Now, I'm gonna tell you, they ain't gonna play with me. Cause I beat their case. I got lawyers. So they better be prepared. But this don't happen in Delray. That's why the chief Sims and Delray don't have no problem. Because when that boy Miller got killed, he got rid of that police officer.
My name is Mercedes Morris. At 112 Northeast 16th Avenue, Boynton Beach. The first cousin of Stanley Davis Jr. And the second cousin of SJ, Stanley Del Davis III. I just find that is very disturbing and utterly ridiculous that the city is asking the family for $1,288.01 to have Stanley's repass at Easy Ohhastor Center. I was told, and I wrote everything down, $433.01 for insurance, $150 for an inspection, $50 for the permit, $340 to use the field which SJ played for the Wildcats in the Bulldogs. $315 for the staff, for a total of $1,288.01. We are grieving. The entire city is grieving. And I just feel that is unfair for the city to want us to pay that at this time, being that the way he was, he left us. We shouldn't have to pay for nothing. We had a peaceful protest at the police station. We had a peaceful bikes up, ride, nothing happened. We shouldn't have to pay for nothing. Priority towing gave my cousin hell last night to get SJ's dirt bike out of their yard. They gave him pure hell to get his dirt bike that he just paid for. He had paperwork, his name was on there, his signature was on there, and they wouldn't release his dirt bike. We had to pay $500 last night to release his dirt bike. I just feel that we shouldn't have to pay for nothing. And I would like you all to take all of that into consideration as we go in this week and bury our thirteen-year-old baby. That was our baby. Thank you.
Mercedes, uh, we do have it on our agendas tonight to discuss that. I know that I'm in favor of having the city with our community support funds or our community enrichment funds to help alleviate any costs that the family might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
And so we do have two podiums, so if somebody wants to go back and forth so we can get everybody to an opportunity to speak.
What information do you need me to state?
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Ram, from West Palm Beach, Florida. Thank you. Uh, I'm a community organizer here, and I've just come to show solidarity and support to not only the city of Boynton Beach and our community, but the family. Tonight, we've heard from parents who have lost children. This is a severe situation. You have a community that's reaching out and asking for swift diligent justice.
On the microphone, I apologize. John, can we close that microphone off?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. My apologies.
It's, it's not a hard ask. Our babies are being murdered. The way that this occurred was just a blatant misuse of power. A blind man could see that a pursuit was not warranted. It is your policy that states, proceed is only, a pursuit is only justified if you think that he's committed a violent act. He's a thirteen-year-old boy. What, what did he do? So this is the type of questions that people really don't need answers to, because we know he did nothing. What we need to see is swift justice. I appreciate you saying you're gonna cover costs. That's a stand-up action. The next stand-up action is this dude is off the streets, and they prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Because if I did what he did, I'd be in jail. What I, what I do, what my energy is coming to this is, we have an opportunity to build a bridge and make amends. You have a unique community here that's just speaking out in unity. We have to show them that this works, because when this doesn't work, we go out there. And out there, none of us want to see what happens when we're angry. I know that you're concerned with your city. We just thought, because we live in a global community, we just saw a judge call us niggers and roaches. We stepped to everything with that trauma. So while it's isolated in Boynton Beach, we're coming to Boynton Beach with all of this pressure. Thirteen-year-old black boy? It's a young black man in America. We matter. There's only so much we can take. And I need my young brothers and sisters to know that this process works, because every time it doesn't, I feel like a fool. But I'm letting you know that people are here engaged, and I'm asking you not just to listen to the community leaders, focus on the family, and hear what they're talking about. Focus on his friends. See what they're talking about. This is a waste of talent. This is a waste of energy. This is a waste of life. Don't make it be for, in vain, excuse me, don't let it be in vain. I'm worked up because I just listened to a dude talk about his dead son, messed my head up. I'm just asking y'all to care, because if you don't, we're gonna make you care. And that's not a threat, it's just a promise with love.
Good evening. Robert Pash, 13819 Wellington. I've been an attorney here in Palm Beach County for almost twenty-three years, and this is hard for me, because I have a fourteen and sixteen-year-old boy. And I, I know Stanley, and he's my friend. And I knew his son, and he was a good boy. There has not been a day that's gone by since this tragedy has occurred, and I haven't asked myself, how could this have been avoided? How do we make sure this never happens again? I think the only way to answer this question is for us as you as a commission to find out what is the true philosophy in policing that the Boynton Beach Police Department employs. Do they subscribe to the philosophy of traditional policing, where it's an us versus them mentality, a war against your community? Or is it what we strive for, which is community policing? Where they believe that they are a part of the community, and they want to make the community better, where they love their community, and they love their neighbors? I, I've met with many Boynton police officers over the years, and some of them are fine, some of them do wonderful work, but we know that not all of them do. The philosophy can never be us versus them. It can't be a war. It should never feel that way. Based on what I know about what happened on December 26th, that officer was not community policing. If the officer believes that Stanley Jr. had done something wrong, he could have gotten that license plate off the back of that bike at that gas station. He could have gone to the home of Stanley or his mom and said, hey, I saw your son driving, or whatever, he believes he had done something wrong. That's what community policing is. That's reaching out to your community and speaking to them, and making sure that if they believe something wrong has occurred, it doesn't happen again. But that's not what the officer did. He was not community policing. He created a dangerous and unnecessary situation that resulted in the death of a boy. I don't truly know what the policing philosophy of Boynton Beach is. I like to believe it's community, but I didn't see that on December 26th. So I pray that the city council and our Boynton Beach Police Chief adopts a zero tolerance towards the type of policing that occur on December 26th. I pray that every officer in Boynton Beach truly and honestly, with an open heart, embraces real community policing. Otherwise, our community will never be in peace.
Thank you.
My name is Liliana Patron, and I'm somebody who went to school with Stanley since elementary school. And on December 26th, the day after Christmas, I got a call from friends from school telling me that my best friend had passed away. And I didn't believe it until I had opened apps and found out more and more people were talking about it. And then I finally talked to people in his family, and it was for real, and it felt real. And he was so cool. Like, we went to school and we hung out, and I would go watch him play football. And all he wanted to do was ride his bike, hang out with friends, go to the movies, be on the phone. He was like the best. He was overprotective over anybody. If anybody said anything to anyone he loved or he cared about, it was like, whoa, step back, what's going on? And that morning, he called me bragging about, I just got this new bike. I really love it. I'm so happy I got it. He was just thanking his dad, thanking his mom. And now he, he got to ride that bike twice. He didn't do anything wrong. He was pumping gas in his bike, and that cop could have stopped him then and there at the gas station. Said something had, said something could collect his plate number. Because if we think about it, if it was, if Stanley was white, it would have been a whole nother story. They would have stopped him there. They would, or they would have never said nothing. And it's hard for me to go and go places and just hear people talking about him. I can't open my phone without getting thousands of calls and messages every single day that he's gone. And I have had people say some horrible things about him, too. And it's not just people talking good about him. There's two sides to every story. And that cop, he doesn't want nothing to be said. He just, he's killed three people, two children, and nobody's saying anything. And we have, you, you guys have to use your power that you have to make a difference, because if not, more people are gonna die. And we are trying. We kept it peaceful. We haven't had any acts of violence. And nothing is being done. What happens if, in a couple months, when this case is over, and that cop is still in the force? What if, what if that cop kills another child or another person? Are you just gonna keep going and talking about it and never recognize it?
Bryce Graham, Second Vice President for the National Network on the Leadership of Reverend Al Sharpton. My address is 4330 Community Drive. We've come here tonight, and I've been attacked on this, about making this a race war. Let me tell you, this is not a race war. What it is, is accountability war. That when you let your officers violate policy more than once, you will hear from our community. Stanley Davis Jr., a thirteen-year-old child, did not deserve that day, the day after Christmas, to be pursued and killed the way he was. Put yourself, city manager. Put yourself in this mother's shoes. Put yourself where she is. That if that was your child that was pursued the way that Stanley Davis Jr. was, a thirteen-year-old child, how would you feel? And so tonight, you hear from a community that is outraged about how you treat our people. And tonight, we have come to tell you in the city of Boynton Beach that enough is enough. Check the records of how many times he violated people. I'm sure it's more than three. So we have to have a plan of action. Let's get accountability. If the city of Boynton Beach does not have a citizen review board, get one and allow them to review what is going on in this city. And so tonight, I have come to say that I come to stand with this family until the end, and we will not back down until we get justice and accountability and transparency in this city. So as I close, Mr. Mayor, Council, I come to tell you, the search light is on.
How you doing? I'm Pernell Davis. My address is 832 Northwest 8th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. And SJ is my nephew. Mayor, we, we heard you say some strong comments on the day of the incident, and we was, as a family, we was pretty happy about some of the stuff you said, but to come here and to hear you backtrack, now we kind of don't know where you stand. And my first initial thought when you said, I said, oh, he's up for reelection, because I really didn't believe. And then I had people in my family and people from, I, I'm the commentator for the Boynton Beach Bulldogs. And I sat up there with you many times, Mr. Hayes, at the game, even you, Mr. Grant, you came in. And those people that I sat with, they, they told me, no, Mayor Grant, he, he's our guy. So it kind of persuaded me to be like, oh, okay, that was genuine. Now I ain't feeling so much genuine. Because a real man, as we're asking Mr. Shawn, I don't even call him a Mr. Mark, to be accountable, be a real man, stand on what you say. So you said something that I know you felt that at the time, but now politically, you backtracking. And that's the same stuff that we deal with as a nation all the time. People say the right stuff just long enough to get our vote, to get our power, and then it's back to the same thing. So honestly, I'm not just disappointed with him from his actions, I'm disappointed with you, too. And as a man, I'm, I'm pretty sure, do you have kids?
Yes.
Yeah, if somebody did this to your kids, and you heard the mayor sigh with them, and then you come just a week and a day later, or two days later, and you hit him backtrack, you'll be disappointed, too. And I'm also disappointed in the city that I was at the scene of the pursuit of my nephew that resulted in his death. And while at the scene, before we even seen the chief, we see a, a Facebook post that the city put up pretty much making him the villain. He killed himself, reckless driving. If you have a reckless driving call or whatever you was, that y'all had, shouldn't we as the people be able to hear the call that you responded to? Or was this just made up, too? So, that's it. And Commissioner Romulus, I actually went to school with your husband for fire. And I know you have a, a good family, so I'm hoping that you can persuade the mayor to stand on what he really believed. Or do you want to be reelected that bad?
Tori O, 106 Ocean Breeze, in Mary Lou, Shannon, I stand with you. Stanley, I stand with you. The family's on both sides. I stand with y'all. But man, I'mma tell y'all about this, uh, bully police in Boynton Beach. This what's going on. We hiring bullies. We is hiring these bullies. Oh, they can't hear me? My mic off? What's going on? Y'all cut it off?
Green light on.
Oh, y'all hear me now? Yeah. Okay, I can start over, right? So I get my whole three minutes. You didn't hear it.
Go ahead. You got it.
Thank you. You know, I want to talk about these bully polices, you know, that we hiring, and the ones that been here over seventeen years. Mark Shawn didn't, he didn't harass me. He didn't took me to jail at John Lee. They didn't slam me all on the ground for nothing, and they ain't find nothing 'cause I looked like a dope dealer. And we have called Woodrow Hayes in the community back in the days when this was happening, when he was the mayor. When the police came out there with gloves on one year, all of them came out there with gloves on, if you remember. We called you. I went to your house personally and said, the police been to jump on us. You say, for what? I say, for having fun. And you came out there, you ran them off that day, but the next day, they were right back on top of us with them blue gloves on. Now they got black gloves with the scraps on, they, they tighten them up when they jump out the car. And, and, and y'all know, multiple times I have came in this meeting, talking about these polices putting their hands in people pockets, they pull up, slam you. Now y'all have been, Officer Mark, whatever his last name is. This man, we all seen this camera, the camera, everybody, we only see one. We all see this man sitting behind this station. Why you couldn't get out your car and walk up to that child, Woodrow Hayes? You would have did that. That's enough diligence. We pay you enough in this city, taxpayers. Now he sitting home. Now he sitting home getting paid off our back, Lori. Why, why, why does I got to go in the store and pay this officer? Because I'm paying taxes here. I pay my light bill here, I pay my water bill here. Homeowners here, apartment renters here. We paying for this officer? Even if he home, Matt? He didn't kill the child. That could have been your child. Your child is the same age around AJ's age. He play part one of football? Why did this officer not charge yet? Why is he not fired yet? And we gonna get him prosecuted, but why, why, why isn't the first step higher yet? Seventeen years, sorry to deal, jaden, now little AJ. And he hunted down all these people. This is a serial killer y'all got on the force. This is a serial killer. Since 2012, this officer been killing. And he thinks this is okay, because he, guess what? He got the PBA gonna stand behind him, and he got the city gonna stand behind him. No matter what. And then we got Chief Gregory. This man out of town, we had a grief. He not much in, not much here, and now he come back today. Woodrow Hayes came out, or whatever, it was good. But man, we need some justice. We need, we, accountability, we want it now. And I'm telling you, if we don't get it now.
So, my name is Kayla Franklin, and I am SJ's aunt. Outside of being his aunt, I am a teacher for the Palm Beach County School District. And with this situation, it's just like, I don't even want to go to work tomorrow. We go back to work from Christmas break. And I wanted to say, you guys are always preaching about be the change that you want to see. We have to tell our kids, when I'm saying kids, I'm talking about the students, to listen and abide by the law and stuff like that, but situations like this make them not want to listen, because if he was to stop, he probably still would have been killed. No witnesses, no nothing, and y'all still, when they did nothing. So my point really- Um, so my point really is for accountability. Um, y'all can hire more people, make this man pay for what he did. We do want charges brought against him. He do need to be removed from the force. All you guys gonna do is create a bigger issue of this small city of Boynton Beach. You guys have seen national outrage with George Floyd and Trayvon Martin and things of that sort. We don't need that here. So it's so easy for you guys to be human, take away your badge and your title, and be human, and feel how we feel as a family, if it was your child, you would want somebody to pay for what they did, because he had no business chasing them. And that's it.
Hello, my name is Jay Moore. I'm S.J.'s cousin.
The microphone will look down.
And the only point I'm here to make today is about the dash cams. You guys have no dash cams in that particular vehicle. I don't understand why that was okay. Had the officer been killed, I'm sure you guys would have had a dash cam. So, um, we need to do something with that, we need to work on that. I don't like the way they're criminalizing him. He's thirteen years old. The biggest crime he committed that day was not being knowledgeable about his bike being on the road. He's not a criminal. He, he does good in school. He does good at all his extracurriculars. So for the way the media is addressing him as if he was committing a crime and he wasn't, the criminals are back there. The criminals are the police. Because they're policing, they're not policing, they're just, they're doing whatever they want to do at this point. They're supposed to protect and serve us. They're, they're not protecting us. They're not protecting us at all. They're protecting each other. And for you to have more police on the case, it makes no sense to me. Police are gonna protect other police. No matter if they're sheriffs, or if they're city police, they're, they're here to protect each other. They're not protecting and serving us. So for y'all to have them on the case, it's preposterous. Y'all need to put it in federal hands, because it makes no sense to have a police investigate another police. Y'all know what they gonna do. Y'all know what they gonna do. I don't understand, what, what is this dash cam thing? Why don't we have dash cams in these vehicles? Isn't that what we pay for? Why don't we have these things in place for things like this to happen? It could be open and shut cases. Now we got to go fight, pay lawyers, all of these other things, when y'all could have just had a dash cam.
Well, the chief said, it's them that all vehicles have to have dash cam when they do a pursuit. The dash cam will turn on.
And why was he also allowed to leave the scene as if S.J. was there by himself? You chased him until he crashed, and then you left and left him there as if he crashed on his own. So you guys are not protecting, you're not policing, you're harassing and causing deaths. Why was this baby, five years old, killed? And someone else convicted, because you chased someone that wasn't committing a felony? So this is bigger than white and black. It's about you guys doing your job as well, so we as the community can follow suit. You have to lead by example. If you guys are out here breaking laws, what y'all think we gonna do? So, um, the first thing y'all can do is start with the dash cam. Get all those vehicles, line them up, and make sure they have cameras on them, because this can't happen again. And it won't happen again. If it does happen again, y'all gonna see even more outrage. Y'all see how many people we bought out? That was in a week. No notice. Y'all see how many people, we'll do it again, and again, and again, and again, until y'all make some changes. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Sharday Hunter. I'm S.J.'s aunt. My address is three two twelve four hundred Northwest Fifteenth Street, Sunrise, Florida. And I just want to speak on, Jaden's dad spoke a moment ago. What he didn't know is that he expressed his, uh, his, his, his concern about, um, well, I'm sorry, emotional. Alright. Jaden's cousin, Lisette. I went to school with her. She shared with me yesterday a DM in Instagram. And she said, you know what kind of therapy? My little cousin Jaden's brother CJ and my grandparents had to go to. Seeing him being hit by a car and thrown across the street. His body all messed up from the impact. That's traumatizing as fuck. How can he not be traumatized as a person, as a father, as an uncle, as a man? She's talking about Mark Shawn. In general, just killing innocent people, especially kids. My grandparents ended up moving because it happened right in front of their house by Roland Green. They couldn't stand to live there anymore. Because they kept thinking about it, they blamed themselves. His siblings are better now, they've been in therapy. They will be in therapy. It will be five years. My cousin, his mom, she still goes through the motions, and she would never be fully healed. I was at work December twenty-sixth. I'm a psychiatric nurse, by the way, mental health nurse. My sister called me screaming said S.J. died. And I was standing at the time, I almost lost my legs. I went, arrived on the scene, and I see my nephew body all on the floor, blood. I watched him born into this world. I watched my sister give birth to him. And that was the happiest day of my life. And to see him on the ground like that, like his life didn't matter. I have to live with that trauma. It plays in my head every single day. I can't get that image out of my head. And I'm a psychiatric nurse. I should be able to deal with these sorts of things. But I need therapy myself. Thank you.
Bishop Kenneth B. Jones, Boynton Church of God, House of Kingdom Worship, one thirty-five Northeast Seventh Avenue, here in Boynton, also with the Boynton Beach pastors, a coalition. I want to start out by saying that my heart breaks to know that this is not the first, not the second, not the third infraction of this officer that we know of. And the problem is not with the police department itself, but it's with you all. To know that he has had one infraction, two infractions, and give him a pass. It's not them. It's you all. It's you all. Why is it you all? Because you all have the power and the authority to not let that happen again. And so, we are calling for accountability. You hear the cry of the community. Let's not sweep this under the rug. Let's clean house. Let me say to you all, I'm not against police. My brother Joseph Crowder was the K nine unit officer here in Boynton. Also, I have another nephew, Jermaine Jones, that is a officer here in Boynton. Also, I served as a chaplain for PDSO. So I'm not against officers. But I am against officers holding them accountable. When you make a mistake, you make the mistake, or whatever you do, you gotta pay the piper. You gotta own up to it. Don't sweep it under the rug. And I'm saying to you all as commissioners, you gotta do something about it. Not just this one. You need to do something about all of them. Because they're not, they're not just looking bad. You all look bad.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Frederick. My address is five ten Northwest Ninth Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I come to tell Shannon and Stanley, I stand with you guys. S.J. was at my house the last few hours of his life before he was ran down like a dog. This not the first time y'all done said the dash cam wasn't working. A few years ago, my son was pulled over with guns drawn by three or four officers, Boynton Beach Police Officers. I told the chief I wanted to see the camera. It drawed out for like a whole year. Oh, we're gonna let him, we're gonna let, we're gonna, needless to say, by the end of the year, when it was, it was no, he started to tell me, it was no dash cam, but they was rushing that car to the shop to make sure this doesn't happen again. And who, here we are, again, no dash cam. If I had a lawyer, I probably, I don't see the point, I probably be y'all, y'all managers right now. But I didn't. And that's the problem with a lot of us, black people, we don't have money to get lawyers, the way you white people do. But we need justice for S.J. today. That slid under the rug, I hope y'all don't let this slide under the rug.
My name is Lolanda Bird Davis. I want to go on record saying that I am Stanley's aunt. Um, I live at eight three two Northwest Eighth Avenue. Um, I wanted to put out there just a overview of his character. Because in a post, it stated that he observed him breaking the law. One thing I know about my nephew, he was raised with standard. He was raised right. So for you to try and put something out in the media as if he just broke the law and was doing something wrong, that's not how he was raised. What you actually saw on camera was a child in fear of his life. I'm gonna actually share it on behalf of some of his friends from their social media posts about this officer. They call him Dog Man. My nephew personally said, when I see Dog Man, I get off my bike because he chases them constantly. He is an antagonist in the community. He ran him down. Because if you watch the video, my nephew has so much fear, he never pumps the gas. When you retrieved his bike, it did not have a gas cap. This is a son who has been honored in this community for years. I have taken off work numerous of times for breakfasts he's been honored at for showing leadership in the classroom. He has scholarships in his name, following him from elementary school. This is not your ordinary child. And it saddens me to my soul, his last hours of his life. This same community, he plays football for this same community. You have observed him play. You also, Mr. Woodrow, have observed him play. How he is being portrayed in the media is absurd by the same community that has praised him for years. Shot with the cop, he has been honored several times. For you to try and demonize him on behalf of an officer who has had coined terms as a rogue officer in the community, I will not stand for it. I will not stand for it. We will not stand for it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Edwards. My address is ten ninety-eight Sea Rape Road, Lantana, Florida. I grew up here on Cherry Hill. And I saw this injustice go on personally, myself. And I couldn't just stand idle and not say anything. Because I stand with Shannon and the Davis family. The Davis family grew up over there in Cherry Hill area. And we were like a close knit family. This same incident, I feel the pain. I know the pain. I walked. It's, it's amazing to me that this can still be going on for so long. From what I seen, and the same incident, it happened basically with my son. Uh, so many things happened over there on the hill, and it takes the police forever to get over there. But the night when my son was in that accident off a minor road, he hit a tree. It was raining, but the first person was there was a police officer. How can that be? He was right there within seconds. The man crossed the street, came to the door, and he said, he looked out the door, and the police was there. It's, it's, it's just amazing. I, I just couldn't figure out. And these questions went unanswered for so long. How is it that he can hit a tree and a police right there? And nobody know nothing. I, I came down so many times, I asked so many questions, and I still have so many unanswered questions. And it's an emotional wreck for me, but I still try to go on. It's because of this community. They stuck by me, and they said, don't worry about it, God got it. And I do believe he got it. He don't just have it for my case and all the other cases in the past, but he have it for Shannon and the Davis family also. And I just pray that you all see what's going on and do something to make this change. Thank you.
No, excuse me. You're not allowed to come back to the...
Oh, this is holding.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Quinn Jenkins, and my address is six eighty-one Southwest Twelfth Court. And I just want to talk about the good times that I've experienced with S.J. over the years. Um, I'm Shannon Thompson's best friend since the tenth grade. And I remember when my friend called me to tell me the news that she was pregnant. She was so excited, and S.J. was considered her miracle child. Because it was so hard for her to conceive. She didn't even think she would be able to be a mom until she became pregnant with S.J. I was off to college when he was born, and she said, friend, he was ten pounds. And I pushed him out with no epidural. And I thought to myself, wow, you're strong. Over the years of seeing S.J. grow up as the only child and seeing him never want for nothing, I mean, he was spoiled but not rotten. He was always so thankful and respectful to his parents. He made his parents proud daily. He was overall a great kid, and obviously far too great for this world. S.J. received multiple awards and was even in the newspaper with Boynton Beach Police Department at least three times. Every day I ask God, what if that officer just came up to S.J. while he pumped gas versus chasing S.J. to his grave? And seeing S.J. leave the gas station on the video footage, and knowing him personally, I can honestly say he was terrified for his life. I'm sure S.J. was trying to get back to his dad, his hero. And he probably was thinking, I just have to make it home to my dad, and he will handle this. I'm not from Boynton Beach, but I know one thing for certain, that the police officers of the black community terrorize the blacks often. And I don't even want to make it a race thing, but that's what it is. This wasn't S.J.'s first encounter with the Boynton Beach Police Department either. My friend even told me one time that, well, S.J. lives on the west, and he, you know, his, his family lives on the east. But it's a different approach. On the west, they simply wait for him to stop rioting to approach them, versus on the east, it's a cat and mouse chase. One thing I do know is S.J. life matters, and if I don't know anything else, I know his parents will not let this go. Without a fight and until justice is served. We as the black community are tired, we are angry, and I can't believe we are still here in the twenty-first century fighting for justice. And it's still a fight. I'm so glad this is not the scenario where the officer can say they were in fear for their lives, because S.J. was in fear for his life.
Hi, my name is Keela Palmer. My address is five oh nine Northeast Second Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I've been a resident of Boynton for forty-five years. When we say community, that means the police and the citizen. I just don't understand, we call him Dog Man. I just don't understand, we call him Dog Man. He's not a rookie. He's been in this community for a long time. Every year, same time, from December twenty-fifth to January third, these kids ride these bikes. This is nothing new for Boynton. They do it every year. These kids wait all year long just to get these bikes so they can ride Christmas with their friends and doing whatever they want to do. I just feel like, we pay our taxes. We do what we supposed to do as a community. Why the hell the police not doing what they supposed to do as law enforcers? He's not nobody that doesn't know the community. You know the difference between a child and an adult? You know the difference between a kid on a bicycle and adult on a bicycle? I just don't understand that. How can he still be home getting paid? And we out here every day trying to get answers for where's the justice? I just don't, I don't get that. And we say a community, it's y'all fault just as much as it's his fault because he's still here. He ain't going nowhere. What happens to the next SJ? I have kids, I have nieces, I have nephew. I lost my brother to a motorcycle accident. Boynton is known for these kids to ride motorcycles. If you from here, this is what we do. And half of the officers that's been here, they know that. They know that. That's, that's, that's nothing that they don't know. I just don't get why that day, SJ by himself. This boy been riding the bike since he was four. He know how to cat, well, from here to Boca probably. So, and he, he, he's not no disrespectful child. I just can't see SJ on purposes putting the police on the chase. I just don't see that. There's no way. There's no way this, this kid here did that. Can't, can't nothing make me believe that? And you can clearly see, he was more scared than anything. And we teach our kids, if you threatened by the police, get, get home. Get to where somebody can see you. Get to where somebody could watch what's going on. And we have to do that because of this reason right here. Because of this reason right here. Ain't no way Dog Man, ain't no, that's what was going on. He did what he did because that's what he wanted to do. That's what he does. It's not the first time, it's not the second time. Now he was three, and he, he's still on the force. Y'all just let him sit home and drink beer, do whatever the hell he want. He get to play with his kids. Shannon and Stanley can't see that kid anymore. It's not fair, it's unjust. And if you guys are the ones to determine whether he stay or go as parents, as citizens, as a community, do what's right. Just do what's right. Thank y'all.
My name's Travis Harvey. My, um, address is forty-eight oh two Southern Place, Lake Worth, Florida. Um, I didn't know the, the, um, SJ or any of the people. But, um, I can only imagine the pain that the families are going through right now. And I believe all the officers, officers should be brought to justice and held accountable for things they did. Um, but things I want to say is to the community today, I believe that we should invest into our own communities, our own businesses. We should, we need to become organized. We need to, instead of, instead of going into a business and is the, the person isn't from your community, give them, give them an agenda. If they don't hire five people from this community, no one, no one from this neighborhood will shop here. And invest the money that you get from that, 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 that business back into a political organization so that, that we bring here. So, so instead of asking for justice, we can demand it.
Thank you.
My name is Stanley Davis. Address eight, three, two Northwest Eighth Avenue, Boynton Beach. I'm the father of Stanley Davis, and it's taken everything in me to get up here and speak. Mainly because, you know, how my son is being portrayed. My, you know, the media. And I just want to shed light on my son. He was an awesome kid. The greatest kid a parent could ever ask for. Not a troubled day in school, not a troubled moment at home, not a troubled moment in the community. I'm not against the police. There's a police officer in here that seen me at Galaxy. Every Friday, we had a relationship. I'm not saying our officer is bad. I'm not saying that at all. This guy personally know me. And at the scene, I was treated wrong. Me seeing, I seen my son deceased. I had the same officer grant me the privilege to be able to hold my son for the final moment. And what really, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have like hatred nor anger for the police. But at this moment, I have a whole lot of hurt inside me. For me to hear from the medic example that my son had tears in his eyes meaning he was crying while being chased. My son is a well-mannered kid. And that's what tear me apart to know that his final moment, he was alone, he was afraid. My son know that I would lay my life on the line. And I know he was only trying to get back to me for me to protect him. And it eats me up as a father knowing that I wasn't there to protect my son when he needed me the most. And I have to live with that. And all I ask is for you guys to do was right. I'm a fair person. I'm okay for rejection. I understand everything that I want would not go my way. And that's just life. I want you guys to step outside of your roles in this community and just be me for that moment. For me to sit there and lay on my son's body lifeless, put yourself in my shoes. For me to smell death on my son's body, put yourself in my shoes. I don't want you guys to do no more than what you feel is right. That's all I ask. Do was right for not only my son, but for the community. I don't want this to be no one else, whether it's in Boynton Beach throughout the United States. If I was that individual, I would be held accountable, and I'm okay with that. I'm quite sure you guys have looked into my past. I'm not perfect. But every mistake that I made, this community held me accountable for my actions. And that's all I ask is for that individual to be held accountable for his action. Thank you.
Mr. Davis? Can I see you for a second?
I'm gonna go, uh, I have some hand raised. I'm gonna go let people speak who are here virtually. Um, Mcquesta Rowell. I see that your hand is raised. I'm gonna unmute your microphone and give you an opportunity to speak.
Good evening, my name is Mcquesta Rowell. I live at sixteen, ten Northeast Third Court, Boynton Beach, Florida. We need justice. I have sons myself. And I'm so, so hurt for this family. I mean, the words are undescribable. I cannot say it enough, that we need justice. We need justice. We need peace. We need these officers to do what they are supposed to do. Exactly what everyone said. I'm so lost for words right now because every person that touched that podium tonight basically said everything that I wanted to say as a mother, as a citizen in the city of Boynton, as a person who knows Stanley and his family for so many years that this little boy, I will address him as a little boy, was such an amazing kid. Was such an amazing kid who had a promising future to become a successful young black man in society. And he was taken away in the hands of someone who was incompetent of doing their job as they should have done it. I pray nothing but peace, love, and guidance for this family and strength is what they really need. All the negativity from the, from the Palm Beach Post and all the people who have kids themselves, I rebuke that in the name of Jesus. I speak peace over this family. May God help them with what they're going through in order their steps. But we need justice for SJ. You have a blessed evening.
Thank you. And so next we have Sheila Jo Gaines.
Good evening. Um, my name is Sheila Jo Gaines, twenty-five hundred Contra Lays Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. I am a representative for Trinity Counseling Centers, better known as TCC. We extend our condolences to the family and the community. We understand that the community of Boynton is grieving and hurting. And we would like to let the community of Boynton Beach know that we are here. We would like to extend our services and offer grief counseling and individual counseling to the parents, family, friends, and the entire community of Boynton Beach. Our contact number is five, six, one, six, six, zero, zero, two, three, seven. We will meet you wherever you are. As a community, we need each other. And TCC would like to say, Boynton Beach, we are standing with you. Our parents are for you and with you. Thank you.
Can you repeat that number one more time?
Five, six, one. Sorry. Six, six, zero, zero, two, three, seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Dr. Tony Drayton. You're currently self muted. I ask you to unmute your microphone to, to go speak.
I'm Pastor Tony Drayton. I live at fifteen hundred Sixth Street, West Palm Beach, Florida. And I'm a senior pastor, River Beach, and congregation organizer, Faith in Florida. Faith in Florida, we're about people, power, and change. Through a network of congregation in South Central and North Florida, Faith in Florida brings people of faith together across race, faith line, to act in a unified moral voice for racial, economic, and environmental justice. Faith in Florida, we're affiliated with faith in action. As the lead pastor and congregation organizer, I want to say that our prayers are with the family and the community. We announce unapologetically that we stand in solidarity with those seeking total transparency, accountability, and justice in this situation. There are some dynamics in life that are simply, that requires common sense. And no person so young should be unjustly criminalized, vilified by press, and condemned because of it like a privilege as others are often afforded. As strong as the blue code may be, there's a higher code, a God-dain code, called the Code of Humanity. Faith in Florida connects with those whom are seeking justice in this matter. And again, our prayers are with the community, are with the family, that total transparency and justice be afforded in this situation. Thank you for your time.
Next I have Betty Henrisi. Are you currently self muted? Betty? Uh, Henrisi? Okay, I'm gonna come back to you. Then I have Shalonda Webster.
Hi. My name is Shalonda Webster. My address is two oh five Northeast Thirteenth Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm heartbroken. I'm angry. Um, I find myself sometimes saying, only if I, as a parent, would have said something last year about this same officer. Um, he did the same exact thing to my son. Um, I'm a mother of four boys. Um, I've been buying them dirt bikes, four-wheelers, since they was able to probably walk. Um, they ride them in the community. They were born and raised up on Cherry Hill. Um, people say, oh, why'd you buy your kids, stuff like that? Being a mother of boys, what else they gonna play with? Bicycles wear out sometimes. Um, last year I got a call. I was hanging out with friends and family. I got a call that my son had been ran over, drugged, pinned up under the truck of Officer Stone's vehicle. He actually chased the guys on the bike. My son was actually on the dirt bike. Um, other guys was on four-wheelers and dirt bikes. He chased them. My son probably was about to last in the crowd that he could probably get close to. Um, he revved his motor, ran into the back tire of my son's dirt bike, pinned him up under the dirt bike. Being that my son was older than Stanley, a little more wiser in that situation, was thinking a little quicker. His leg was pinned up on the bike, in the truck. The cop continued to try to drag him up under the bike, but by God's grace, God stopped that. My son was able to get his leg from under there, jump up from, off the bike and run. Officer Stone then continued to jump out of his vehicle with the firearm, chasing my son, stating, stop running before I shoot you. At what circumstances, at what, um, as a police officer, why would you feel like you needed to shoot him? He was armed, he didn't do anything wrong. Yes, he was riding the bike along with other, uh, kids in the neighborhood. At that moment, I knew nothing about the chase with the gun. I didn't find that out until the incident just happened with little Stanley. Um, my son at that time was like, ma, don't worry about it. He was more concerned about the bike. Ma, I'm okay, I'll just heal at home. He was skanked up, bruised up, leg, ankle, um, fractured a little. But again, he was, he was a big boy. He felt like, okay, mama, I'm gonna get past this. I beat myself up every day, every night since this incident with little Stanley. And I state, only if I would have put that to the side, worry about a bike, and just went down there and said something, would this probably happen to little Stanley? This is, when I say words can't even express how I feel about the situation. You don't want to look at it as a racial thing, but we have no other way to look at it. He continuously does this to our black community. He continuously get a thrill, a thrive out of chasing these guys, running them down on bikes. Just Christmas Day, he chased my son them again on the bikes. Officer Stone, you've been in this neighborhood for over seventeen years, Dog Man. You know these kids ride these bikes around that time. You know what's gonna be going on. These kids not disrespectful. All they want to do is enjoy their little time on their bikes, enjoy the holiday, do a little bike riding, and continue to live. Unfortunately, that's not the case with little Stanley. That's not the case. The day after Christmas, his parents would never, ever look at Christmas the same, look at life the same, nor the Boynton Beach Police Department the same. I can never look at y'all the same. Nobody. Again, everybody has stated the same thing I'm saying.
Thank you for your comp. This Betty Henrisi. You're currently self muted with your hand raised.
Okay. Hello, I'm Betty Henrisi. I live at eleven ninety-two Bueller Place. I have a thirteen-year-old. I would hate to ever feel the pain that the family is going through. I have a thirteen-year-old. I would hate to ever feel the pain that the family is going through. And the cop should be held accountable for his actions 'cause there was so much other ways he could prevent the situation from happening where it didn't lead to the boy dying. And if the community can come together, where we create a place with the tax dollars to build somewhere for all the kids to be able to ride their dirt bikes, so this won't ever happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
My name is Tyler Glock. I, uh, I'm not a resident of Boynton Beach. Um, I'm a rider. I ride dirt bikes. I ride motorcycles. I'm thirty-six years old and, um, I just wanted to say some things. And I tried to wait until, you know, all the families went. You know, I grew up riding bikes. And I'll, I'll tell you one thing I didn't grow up with was riding a motorcycle in fear that somebody was gonna kill me. You know? And, uh, where I live, we have people riding down my street with side-by-sides. It costs forty thousand dollars. It's a nice neighborhood. And nobody bothers them. Okay? I ride down my street. I ride dirt bikes down my street without plates on them. Nobody bothers me. Sorry, guys. You know? Nobody tries to kill me. You guys have a problem here, you know? And I felt, I felt weird coming in here. I honestly did, you know? And, and somebody had said, you know, I mean, it doesn't happen where I live. I live twenty minutes from here. You know? I've been, I've been doing this for years, you know? I, I have a plate. I have a dirt bike. It's Enduro. It's got a plate on it. You would never know unless you're twenty feet away. You wouldn't be able to see that license plate. Nobody ever turns around to follow me. I never get chased. Everybody leaves me alone. It's a Honda, too. Just, just like that was. What do you think the difference is?
Sir.
All right, my name is Deandre Brinson, um, 510 Northwest 9th Avenue. Um, two hours probably prior to, you know, SJ accident, he called me at like eight forty-five. Normally, when he rides, I'm probably the protector for him. I ride also. And I know whenever he's with me, you know, he's invincible. He don't fear anything. And, um, that particular day, I was, um, getting gas ready for my work vehicle. And, um, he was at my house prior. And I begged him to, you know, get in the van with me to take him to get something to eat. But he, uh, you know, he was just anxious to ride his bike. It's a day after Christmas. Every kid is anxious. You know, this is what goes on in the neighborhood. But to make a long story short, he came in the gas station. I was shocked that he came to that particular gas station. He handed me five dollars to give him gas. And, um, when I walked out the gas station, he told me, he was like, you know, I saw this one officer. I, I think he might try to chase me. You know, I told him, I said, SJ, you should be good. I mean, it's a day after Christmas. He might just, you know, go about his business. I put my head down for a quick second while I was pumping gas. And before I knew it, SJ crunk up. I wonder why he crunk up. And I knew he was scared 'cause in the video, you can't tell when he crunk up, the bike cut right off. So he stalled out. Then he crunk back up and, you know, he tried to do whatever he did, but it take a toll on me 'cause at the end of the day, like I say, I was a protector, you know, for him. And if I would have known that it was this particular officer, I would have made it my business to say, you know, SJ don't wind, or worst-case scenario, I would have drove the bike for myself. And it's just, it kills me every day, every time I think about it. 'Cause at the end of the day, I can only imagine what he was going through with his head. Everybody has an encounter with the police where they've been in fear of their life before. But just to imagine what he was going through those last seconds, the last moments, it just kills me every day, like, good kid, all-around good kid. I mean, we could talk for hours, football, bikes. You know, whatever he wanted to talk about, I was open ear for him 'cause he was just an all-around good kid. And it's just, it's a sad situation. I just hope he gets justice because he do deserve it. That's it.
And just to note, a few weeks ago, they said he put on his Instagram that if he sees Officer Shawn, Dogman, he was gonna put his bike up. That's how scared he was of that officer. He didn't say, if I see a Boynton police officer. He said, Dogman. That's how scared he was of that officer. So I can only imagine what he went through when that officer pulled up and looked at him like, I got you now. That baby was scared his last few hours.
My name is Iona Farmer. I am not a member of the Boynton Beach community by address, but I am by heart. Um, SJ was sweetheart. I've known him from kindergarten up until when he left elementary school. You never had to talk to him more than once. He was respectful and he was loved. And I knew when I first heard, I said, there's no way, there's no way he ran from him if he was not scared. And when I saw the video, I knew from the, from a parent's point of view, he was scared. My question is, we built so much with our babies, with the kids, for a community with the police. And then you have this one officer, he comes and he breaks that. Where do we go from here? How do we tell our kids that they can trust the people that are supposed to serve and protect them? How do we tell them that they can ride and know that they'll be safe? When does Boynton say, it's enough, let's build a park for these kids so that they can ride and be safe instead of running them down? There was no point in what he did. No point. And I say it from here to the day I die, justice for SJ. We want it all. We want it all. I told everybody, I know SJ was gonna make us proud. I knew that. I knew he was gonna leave Boynton and come back and make us proud. I just did not know it was gonna cost him his death to do that. But we will say his name. And until we get justice, I guarantee, it's gonna be no peace. We want it. How do you think these educators can go to school tomorrow and face these kids knowing that he's not there? Our babies are hurting. The parents are hurting. The community is hurting. And it's timeout. It's timeout. We want transparency. We want answers. More so, we want him gone. And I mean that with everything I love. We want him gone.
Good evening. My name is Gina Pierre, and I am a member of the community. I'm really sorry that a young man in our community lost his life. However, there has to be some sort of accountability. If this officer is targeting black youths in our community, then justice does need to be served. However, you all are accountable for what happened here. And it did not have to happen this way. Yes, the officer could have used a different tactic, but imagine if you are not from this community and you do not know that this is what these kids do. We have friends and family that come and visit this community. They aren't aware that these kids ride these bikes in the street with no tag. So imagine if you're in your vehicle and you have people in front of you, to the left of you, the right of you, behind you, and now you are boxed in. And you have no idea what is about to happen because you aren't from this community. You're here visiting. It was Christmas. We have friends and family that come from other places. This could have been avoided. You all should have a place for these kids to be able to ride these bikes if this is what you know that they do during this time of the year. I've been in this community now for four years. And when I first got here, I didn't know that that's what these kids do. So imagine my fear. I'm sitting in my car and I am boxed in. If I was a fearful person, I might have hit the gas pedal thinking, you know what? I fear for my life. This could have been avoided. You all know that these kids do this. Make it safe, not just for them, but for also the people that drive on these streets. If this officer was targeting our youth, then justice should be served. And you all know what you need to do. However, you also have to do what's right for this community. These kids should be able to play safely without fearing for their lives. And that's what I'm asking what you, for you all to do today. To hold this officer accountable for this loss of life, but then also to make our community safe 'cause we pay tax dollars too. And 911 should not be a joke in this town. And it's not just about this. It's about other things too. So we're asking you, please, our community is hurting. Do something. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Makisha Vargas. Um, I'm one of, um, SJ's best friend's mom.
A little bit closer into the microphone.
I'm one of SJ's friend's, best friend's mom. And I just pray that actions, that his actions, that he's accountable for it. I pray that justice is served. Um, I have to look at my son every night. He talks, he turns, he look at his phone. His screensaver is SJ and him on the front. He asks me, Mom, SJ can't come with us this year for my birthday. His birthday is next month. He was with us last year for his birthday. It's not one time that his parents didn't come get my son. They've been friends since they was five. They graduated from Tiny Tights. They've been cool forever. And it's sad that the kids have to go through this. It's kids that is hurting. My son is hurting. He's gonna miss his friend. All you do is talk about him. He don't wanna do nothing for his birthday because he, he can't be there. So I just pray that justice is served and that he's held accountable for his actions.
All right. We have someone virtually, Ricky Pathell. And I'll ask if anybody else would like to speak from the audience, please step up to the podium. Mr. Ricky Pathell?
I'm here.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to speak, uh, on behalf of the community. I was born and raised in Boynton Beach, Florida. I am a sergeant in the police department. I'm not speaking on behalf of my department. One and a half of the people that I've grown up with has helped me be and put me in this position to be successful in my life. I'm not saying everything that goes on in our community is correct, and we have a long way to go. But me knowing how to do my job is the reason why I have an issue with this. And I want to speak on behalf to say that we know as, as professionally, you're not supposed to chase anybody if it's not a forcible felony, whether you're in a vehicle, motorcycle.
Um, yeah. Mr. Pathell, we're having trouble hearing your audio. So I don't know if you are on a cellphone and doesn't have good reception.
And knowing my community.
Mr. Pathell.
The issue for me is knowing that, yes.
Mr. Pathell, we, we lost thirty seconds of your, your statements. So you said something about, uh, after a forcible felony.
If, if it's not a forcible felony, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't chase, especially on a motorcycle or a dirt bike. And that's, that's, that's the disturbing part for me. Uh, this is a veteran officer that decided to chase someone on a motorcycle, uh, that wasn't a forcible felony. Uh, and that's, that's, that's the issue for me and resulting in the death of a person. Uh, I have faith in the community. I have faith that the right decision will be made. Uh, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of, of the family and Boynton Beach community and just ask that we all come together regardless of the situation. We all have to deal with this in love. And we all have to make the right decisions. Everybody have opportunities to speak their mind and say what they feel. But at the end of the day, it's a decision that needs to be made. And whether we agree with it or not, we still have to come together in love and move forward. I just wanted to speak on my behalf and let my community know that I love them and I thank them for all the things that I've learned to be in my position that I'm in today. Thank you for, for listening.
Thank you. I have, uh, Brandy Ann. Uh, you're currently self muted. If you'd like to speak, please unmute your microphone.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, I'm just a member of the community and, um, I wanted to say I'm very sorry to, um, Stanley's family and, uh, it's wrong when this officer has already killed, um, two people prior to this. And I think that, you know, after the first time, it should have been investigated. And it's just odd that there's no video from that car and something needs to be done to this. So I just wanted to say, um, my condolences to the family and, um, I hope everybody can come together and figure this out. Thank you.
And so I'll ask again, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak who has not spoken for public audience? I do not. John, do you see anyone else with their hand raised?
Uh, Mayor Grant, no, I did not.
Okay. Uh, we did receive some comments and those will be included as part of the record, uh, as the minutes. Would you like to? Are you stretching or? Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm just not remembering this. It was, I think it was-
Say your, your name and address for the-
Chamari Davis again. But anyways, I'm just now remembering this. I think it was 2020 and it was the election and they were, I think they were holding the polls at the Ezel Hester Center. And everybody was so worried about the presidential election. And I was with my aunt, Beth Ann Whitley. And we were, of course, you know, doing signs, passing out waters, drink stuff like that. And I met you, Mr. Grant, the mayor. And he wasn't really, you know, flashing it off that like he was running for an election too, 'cause he was just there. But when we saw you and we were asking you, what are you gonna do to contribute to our community? How are you gonna help us? You looked me in my eye and you told me that you're gonna do the best that you can do with your power if you get it. And you got it now. So I'm asking you, I need you to look me in my eye one more time. And I need you to tell me you're gonna do the best you can do, okay? I just need you to look at me and tell me you're gonna do the best you can do for us again. You have the power now.
I wa, I was there on Sunday. I was there on Monday. And I will, as long as I'm the mayor, I will do the best that I can to make sure there's justice for SJ.
Thank you.
Mayor Grant, there was another hand raised. I'm not sure if they just lowered it. I believe they did. My apologies.
All right. Now, if there, I do not see any more someone else that would like to speak. We're gonna close public audience. And-
Whoops there. Mayor Grant, I'm sorry. Anthony Caldwell does have his hand raised and I will unmute him now.
All right, thank you. And we get some more virtually. All right. Mr. Caldwell. You're currently self muted. If you'd like to speak, you have to unmute your microphone. If you'd like to speak, you have to unmute your microphone. I'm getting that it's, he's not attentive. All right. So John, and then I see Lakeisha ramming, trying to raise her hands and then it ends closing. Uh, Lakeisha? Ramming, ramming?
Hello? Um, I just wanted to say that being born and raised in Boynton, we love our city, you know? We love it, we represent it. Um, it just sucks that we get to a point where we fear the people that was put in place to protect and serve, you know? And other than justice for SJ, which is a huge mission for us all in the community, we just need to make sure that if they're here to protect and serve, that we feel that as residents or even as a visitor. You don't want to hear about, hey, the police don't care. Or, hey, this is their objective, you know? So I just want to be known. We want justice for SJ, of course, definitely. But also, we want to live in a city or come to a city as a visitor that we know, they know and understand their job is to protect and serve and they're held accountable if not. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just Commissioner Katz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone who came tonight to share their experience and their feelings. Um, and I think per what everyone on the board has said that the mission is to ensure that a proper investigation gets to the root of what happened and justice will be served based on those findings. So thank you all again.
And I'll give one last opportunity. Keep getting new people raising their hands. Uh, Mark Johnson? You're currently self muted. And so I'll ask everyone who's virtually, please raise your hands so we know how many more people are left that would like to speak. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please state your address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Johnson. I'm at 426 Northwest 12th Avenue in Boynton Beach. And I wanted to say that, you know, my son, you know, I know SJ because of my son. He's played football with the young man. You know, he's a great kid. And a lot of our kids and, you know, all of these people have spoken highly of him. So his character isn't really in question. And, you know, some people would say that even the character of a lot of people involved, we don't really know. But what we do know is that something happened and that we need to know the truth about what happened. That's the most important thing here, is us finding out the truth about what happened. If the officer didn't do anything wrong, then he has nothing to hide. And the police don't have anything to hide. Now, it's no way, it is pretty strange that in 2022 that we have a police vehicle that isn't equipped with a dash cam. But let's just say that's the case. This place is covered. This is one of the busiest streets in Palm Beach County. And there's no way that something wasn't captured on camera that will give us a clear idea of what went on on that street. It only happened a few seconds after the other video ended. So it's gotta be possible for us to find out. So what I would like to know, just, you know, to not leave things open is, can we get an answer tonight about a clear cut timeline for information about this investigation to be made public? Can we get a clear cut timeline? So we're going to do an investigation and in a week, we're going to tell you, this is what we found. We checked the video cameras of every business on that street. And here's what we found. And we want to see the tapes. We want to hear the, we want to read the transcripts, talking with the people, the business owners, the employees that were working that day. Can we get a timeline to say how long before we get some actual information about the investigation?
Uh, Mr. Johnson, I think that would be up to the police chief.
My question is open to him. I mean, I don't, it's not just for you, sir. It's, you know, and can't that be mandated by you if, you know?
So the information that I have is that there's currently a state Supreme Court case for Marcy's law regarding police officers. And after that, state Supreme Court has a ruling where the City of Tallahassee versus the Police Benevolent Association. So then we can get more information after that. As for the comments that we currently have with the police chief is that everything is under investigation. And we have not had any updates. And so we know that there is cameras involved, more than one hopefully. And we would have to come back next, you know, be at the city commission meetings for an answer.
But what we can't have is just an open window. You know, this can't, we can't, see, that's not going to be satisfactory to people to just leave it open ended. So it's gotta be some kind of timeline. We can get back to you with some information, not just a general, you know, statement, but some information in two weeks, in, you know, in 10 days, you know? I don't think that's too much to ask for people to be able to get some facts about what happened. And a timeline for when we can expect to get some facts. It may not be the completion of the investigation, but at the very least, we should be able to get some facts and get an update. So we are constantly kept abreast of what's going on.
I agree with you.
And what has been found out.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Right, Anthony Caldwell. I'll give you another opportunity. You're currently self muted. And I believe you just- Mr. Caldwell? All right, I'm going on to Annette Gilbert.
Yes, good evening and greetings to everyone. Um, I'm calling, speaking from In the Road Ministers' Prayer and Worship Center where pastors Bobby Gilbert Senior and Dr. Annette Gilbert are pastors. And I just want to make one statement. I'm listening to everything, that we are listening to everything that has been said tonight. The one thing I do want to say is that until the heart is touched, the eyes will never be open. Individuals behave and respond from the abundance that's in the heart. Thusly, until the heart is changed, there'll be no change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caldwell? Last opportunity. Okay, I do not see anyone else virtually raising their hands. Mr. Caldwell? You're currently self muted. You'd have to unmute. I see you're unmuted now. Can you please speak into the microphone? My apologies, Mr. Caldwell. Uh, we are not getting any audio from you. And now I see that you closed your microphone. It's back on. I do apologize if the software is not working properly for you. But I'm going to have to move on. Okay. John, one last time, is there anyone else that is raising their hands or asking?
Mayor Grant, no, that was the last one that I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would request that we take a five minute recess.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. All approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Good.
Heard some of that run it's course for you sick.
You got, oh no, you got it? Did you catch it? Oh, this whole thing. This whole thing, yeah. Yeah, yeah, this last week I got posted and I got.
Yeah.
Good.
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 Yeah.
Good.
Good. Run it's course for you sick. You got, oh no, you got it? Did you catch it? Oh, this whole thing. This whole thing, yeah. Yeah, yeah, this last week I got posted and I got.
Good.
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 Good. Good. Good. Good. Good.
Good. Good. Good. Good.
I'm going to ask everyone to please be seated. We're going to continue with the meeting. So moving on to item three A announcements of the annual preventive maintenance and chlorination of the water supply for January sixth two thousand twenty-two through January twenty-six two thousand twenty-two. Do we have our new utility director talking about this?
I'm going to do that on behalf of the utilities mayor. Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager of Public Services. Thank you. Boynton Beach Utilities will be forming its annual preventative maintenance to drinking water from January sixth through January twenty-six two thousand twenty-two. Customers may notice a slight chlorine taste in or odor in their tap water. These temporary conditions will not cause adverse health effects. Those sensitive to taste or odor of chlorine can place an open container of drinking water in the refrigerator for a few hours to allow the chlorine to dissipate. Users of home dialysis machines, owners of tropicals fish, managers of stores, restaurants with fish and shellfish holding tanks are advised to seek professional advice as a method for removing chlorine residuals differs from removing chlorine residuals from the water. This preventive maintenance process is in order to ensure potable water delivered to the customers is of the highest quality. Public notice will be placed in the city of Boynton Beach Utility Bills and has been provided by the city's marketing department for social media distribution. For more information or questions, please call the utilities department at five six one seven four two six nine six four. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an announcement by Gabriel Favetta, Events Manager regarding January's first Friday at five and Friday Flicks.
The online is.
Mayor Brandon is John McNally. Gabby, can you unmute yourself? You're currently self muted.
We got a not attentive on her. There you go. Gabrielle. John, is there a reason why we're not getting any audio?
Not that I'm aware of. It's.
Here, I can do that on her behalf.
Okay, we're going to have Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager, Public Services.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce the January's first Friday at five is scheduled for Friday, January seventh, beginning at five P M. and will be held at Centennial and Amphitheater. The groove and funky party band will perform. The following food trucks will be participating, curd side gourmet, G's, hibachi, Bobby's Hot Dogs, Juju's Feel Good Foods and professional concessions. There will be a variety of children's art and play activities. Friday Flicks, a monthly movie series will be held at Centennial Park and Amphitheater. The January movie is Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and the event will take place on Friday, Friday, January twenty-first, beginning at five P M. The following food trucks for will be participating in crazy Cuban flavor, J and J Soul's Taco Veracruz and Kabashi's Ice Rolls. There will also be a variety of children's art activities. These family friendly events are free to the public and end at eight P M. The public is encouraged to bring chairs and blankets to both events. Free parking is available in the parking lots behind the Art and Cultural Center and the Schoolhouse Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. And last is announcement by Chelsea Sanabia, Marketing Events Coordinator regarding the two thousand twenty-two Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Chelsea, you're currently, oh.
Hi. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Chelsea Sanabia, Marketing and Events Coordinator at the City of Boynton Beach. The City of Boynton Beach's two thousand twenty-two Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration will take place on Monday, January seventeenth at Sarah Sims Park from twelve P M. to four P M. This event will include youth performances, local choirs, a historical presentation, music and dancing, children's activities, food vendors, a showcase of nonprofits and more. We invite everyone to attend this free, family friendly event featuring the newly renovated Sarah Sims Park Amphitheater. Complimentary parking will be available at Carolyn Sims Center. Accessible parking will be available as well. In addition, the community is invited to participate in a day of service, neighborhood cleanup in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his legacy on Monday, January seventeenth, from nine A M. to eleven A M. at the Carolyn Sims Center. Additional volunteers will be needed to help plan and execute the event. The upcoming MLK Committee meetings are scheduled for Thursday, January sixth and Thursday, January thirteenth, beginning at four thirty P M. on Zoom. Meeting details are posted on the homepage of the city's website under meetings. Please visit boynton-beach.org backslash MLK or call five six one seven four two six zero three four for more information and/or to volunteer for the event.
Chelsea, thank you so much for that information. One of the members from the MLK Committee contacted me and gave me an update from the King Center from Bernice King. And one of the things that they said is that they want to move towards a commemoration of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. versus a celebration so that we are more looking at the work that he did for voting rights. And so I want to know, is that possible to change the word from celebration to commemoration?
I, I will defer to the Assistant City Manager, Andrew Mack.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And so, yeah, it's, you know, I'm very excited for the commemoration for Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. because we want to have it as a family event here in the city of Boynton Beach so that voting rights and community involvement begins at a very early age. And so you'll also have, I guess, information regarding the day of service with a different flyer from nine to eleven. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I look forward to those press releases in our newsletter. And is it still marketing at bbfl.us if anyone wants to join the newsletter?
Yes, joining the newsletter would be marketing at bbfl.us. If anybody was interested in joining the MLK Committee, they can email mlk@bbfl.us as well. And just to reiterate, our next meeting will take place this Thursday via Zoom, so they would be able to get the Zoom link by emailing that mlk@bbfl.us email as well.
Right. Thank you so much, Chelsea.
Have a good night.
All right. Next, we're going to discuss administrative, authorize the city commission to travel to Tallahassee, Florida to attend the Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Days on February seventh to the ninth two thousand twenty-two. There's also Florida League of Mayors events at that time, and so that is why I'm requesting the ability to travel if and for the rest of the city commission if they so choose.
Yes.
Second, if that's emotional?
Yeah. All right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We have two regular and two alternate positions available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Once, two students on the Education Youth Advisory Board, an alternate available for the Historic Resources Preservation Board, one regular and two alternates for the Library Board. We have one applicant, Sandra Watson, for the Senior Advisory Board that I'd like to nominate.
Okay.
To ignore further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, we are on consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any of the items for consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item six C. Other than Charlie.
Okay. Okay, and for me, I'd like to pull, where's the Lutheran, six E? Yes. So six, can I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item six C, proposed resolution twenty-two dash zero zero two, approve revisions, deletions and additions to planning and zoning division fee schedule to reflect current services and updated costs and to correct general deficiencies.
Yes, I would like to have Adam come up and talk to us about adjustment of fees there.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city commission, staff and residents. The item before you, Vice Mayor, is a update to our planning and zoning division fee schedules. They haven't been been updated for approximately eight years, so we've been analyzing all of our fees throughout the department, building department as well, comparing our, comparing our, our fees with neighboring municipalities, taking into account cost of living adjustments and inflation, and we've, we've adjusted our fees that are, that are before you, that are, that are in line and competitive with all of our surrounding neighbors.
This is put us in, in alignment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second with discussion.
Yes.
In the future, I would prefer to see some type of just brief presentation on this, especially if it's helping us to improve our services rather than just having it just be put under consent.
We do have a presentation. Quick four page, four slide presentation. We, we do have a presentation, a quick four-page, four-slide, uh, presentation.
All right, now let's, let's see it.
Yeah.
Thank you for the request.
Yep.
I can't read that, I'm sorry. Let me.
So. The city?
So. So this, uh, this provides, uh, the reason behind, uh, some of the updates, um, that go a little bit more into detail.
I'll, I'll be happy to read, Adam, if you'd like. Uh, update includes LDR changes. The city revised the intensity thresholds for the development approval and approval process. These change is allowed for larger, more complex, and more time-consuming projects to be approved administratively. The associated fees have not been updated to reflect these changes. Application changes. Application titles and requirements have been streamlined with the division's applications. The proposed fee schedule includes revisions to be consistent with these modifications. Missing fees. Several applications that require planning and zoning reviews currently do not have corresponding fees. Examples include the processing of sign programs and sign program amendments, BTR zoning reviews, alcohol license reviews, and required pre-application meetings. PBC fee comparison. Analysis was conducted comparing the city's planning and zoning fees with those of other municipalities in Palm Beach County. Currently, the City of Boynton Beach generally has significantly lower fees than other municipalities with the county, including those directly to the north and south of the city limits, while the proposed revisions generally represent an increase in fees that resulting amounts are comparable and remain competitive with neighboring municipalities. Next slide.
What? No, stop. Um, under missing fees, where it says required pre-application meetings, why is that something that needs to have a fee associated with it?
So the, the, the pre-applications are, are a requirement, and the way that that is, uh, that that is going to work is it's going to be credited towards their DART review. So any, any fee that they pay for the, for the pre-application meeting, uh, once they go to DART, it'll be applied to, towards their DART review. As a credit, as a credit.
And Adams, that's for staff time?
Right.
It's, it's.
And that's for, that's for staff time. The whole, the whole DART team from the different disciplines, uh, for the different departments, uh, participate in those meetings. So it's to account for, um, staff time.
So I, I understand what the DART processes. I also understand it's to account for staff time. I think my, my concern is if there is a developer or a resident, I am more so concerned about the, the resident who would be having to now pay for pre-application meetings, that may cause an issue or, or rather a block. That's my concern. So explain that to me.
I understand that, Commissioner. So no, uh, a, a resident could still come in and meet with us and discuss, you know, something that they, that they, that they want to, that they want to do, right? So that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a charge. But if they're, if they're looking to go through our land development process, through the pre-app, DART review, and before public hearings, um, then that would, um, we are recommending a fee for those, um, types of technical reviews.
And, and what does that look like? Like, in terms of that pre-application meeting, what is that like? Seventy-five dollars for two hundred and fifty? Is it per hour? Like, how is that?
It's, it's one fee, hundred dollars.
Okay.
And that goes towards their DART. Like I said, once they, they move beyond pre-app, they go to DART, and that's credited towards that, so they don't pay the full amount. They wouldn't pay the full amount for, for DART.
Okay, so the, the DART is a larger quantity, so it would just apply towards that?
Right.
So. Again, my only concern is, does it deter people from getting the help they need in the beginning if they're concerned that they're going to have to be paying every time they sit down with a member of our staff to do the work that they need to work on? Maybe they're doing a fence, or maybe they're doing a addition to their home. That's what my concern is right now.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't, some of, some of those scenarios that you, that you discussed wouldn't require a pre-app.
So you're talking.
Somebody installing a fence, you know, something like that, wouldn't require them to come in.
You're talking more major development?
Development projects.
Development.
So like a, a multifamily or like a?
Correct.
Office.
Or office, something like that, some major kind of more developer, like commercials type stuff.
Right.
Well, if there's a zoning change or a major site plan associated with a development, that is when this would mostly apply.
And most, most of the fees.
But, but not necessarily anything to do with single-family residential. Unless it's a.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless it's a new home on a, a vacant lot.
Right.
I think, Mayor, if you mind, I, I think to clarify this, I think the, some applications that are required, uh, pre-application meetings, and I think the ones that you're alluding to, which means for more for the residents, there's no requirement for those pre-application meetings. These are strictly the meetings that were, like you mentioned, site plan, major land use changes and stuff like that. They're required to have a pre-app meeting. So what we're doing is a cost recovery to make sure that we're capturing the staff time from that meeting, because we do have quite a bit sometimes where you have a, a developer that comes in just wanting to kick tires and leave. Now, we do have meetings where they can just call, maybe they're asking questions, but they're having a meeting where the pre-app is typically where you have nine to 10 people around a meeting, all talking about plans at a meeting. So that's one of the reasons why we're proposing this fee.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, because that's what I, I wanted to make sure I understood, and now that that's been clarified, I'm fine with this. Thank you.
The earlier the communications, the project goes much smoother, and, uh, we find that that actually helps because that, they start identifying potential issues right up front. Um, and it just helps the project move along as we continue to talk.
Sounds good.
Um, so we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by, oh, do we have two other slides? The major development.
Yeah, that's just a, that's just the comparison.
Gives us the example for the next slide.
It's all on the backup.
And then, uh, is there one more slide?
Oh, sir, it should just be a.
Okay, the questions then.
Gotcha. Thank you for the assist.
Thank you. My pleasure. All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, resolution 22-004, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a special warranty deed with restrictive covenant in connection with the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and Lutheran Services Florida, Inc. Um, I want to thank, uh, everyone involved for this process. I know it's, it's been a while. Um, and to continue to have a head start program here in Boynton Beach, um, very happy and, um, all the work that the legal department did. So may I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. Would someone from the Commission like to pull any of these items? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public, do you mind if we move up, uh, item 9B? Which is, uh, the newly put item in front of public hearing? May I have a motion to approve to amend the agenda?
To move to amend.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, Lori?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just added this item because I think it's important, as, you know, we talk about the, the families upcoming events on Friday and Saturday. Um, in terms of a, a fee waiver process, we really don't have one, and, um, I'm not authorized, nor is any one individual member of the Commission really authorized to waive fees. So what we think is going to be appropriate is, is what I wanted to ask the Commission is we have a community enrichment fund, which is a donation account that is not restricted. The community support funds would not be appropriate use, uh, to cover these fees based on the rules for that, those funds, but our unrestricted account of the community enrichment funds, which is basically the money that, uh, Christ Fellowship donates to us each year, would be an appropriate account if the Commission would like to, um, pay for those fees out of that account is the appropriate way to do this. And I understand that's probably where you, what you would like to do, so that's, I just wanted to, we have to vote on it to do that as a board, and we would be happy to do that.
So may I have a, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And so, uh, this means that the, the two-day event, uh, this Friday?
Yeah, well, I'm sure Mary will reach out to, um, Ms. Thompson. I think it, it, your name was on the application, right, for the special event? So we'll reach out and talk to you about, uh, whether or not we think we need to get the portlets, uh, for Saturday, if we think we're going to have that many people, and just kind of work out the, those logistics. The liability insurance will be in your name, but the, the city will, will pay the premium on that. And then the other fees, uh, inspection fees and so forth, the city will, will be paying that through, uh, this donation account. Okay?
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now we're going to move to public hearing. Uh, the City Commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacities, local planning agency and city commission. Proposed ordinance 21-031.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, amending Chapter Four, entitled Site Development Standards. Article Four, entitled Signs Standards, amending Section One, entitled General. Section Two, entitled City Approval Required. Section Three, entitled Prohibited Signs. Section Four, entitled Standards. Section Five, entitled Community Design. Section Six, entitled Sign Program. Section Seven, entitled Nonconforming Signs. Section Eight, entitled Signs at Abandoned Businesses, repealing certain provisions providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
Yes.
Rather, just a comment. Shayna, I, I think you should apply to be like a voiceover. Your, your voice is just so calming. I don't know how you manage to do it, but yes. Just do that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I want to thank, uh, the staff. I know this took, what, over a decade to do?
It felt like it. It wasn't that long.
I haven't been here that long, sir, so.
From what I can tell, the.
A couple of years.
The, the sign ordinance has not been changed in a long time.
Yeah, you're right.
And so, uh, I appreciate that. We, we give, uh, the city a lot more tools, uh, and businesses a lot more tools to adequately, uh, display their commerce. So I have a motion and second. If there's no further discussion? Huh? Yeah, I know. So make a roll call.
I do, Mayor, if I could, just real quick, want to thank, uh, Mike and the City Attorney's Office. It's been a long project in the making. Them working on it together rather than a consultant saved us quite a bit of money, so I just want to thank them.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramos?
Aye.
The votes five-zero.
All right, our next ordinance is 21-032. Second reading, approving amendments to the Land Development Bill. Shawna, do you want to read it?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter One, Article Two, Definitions, Chapter Three, Article Four, Section One, Operational Performance Standards, and Chapter Three, Article Four, Section Three D, Use Matrix and Notes as Necessary to Show Compliance With and Implement New State Laws Applicable to Home-Based Businesses, Providing for Conflicts, Severability, Codification, and an Effective Date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion from the Commission or the, the audience?
Hi, Ernest McNally, 710 North 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Unit 407. I purchased and live there since November of 2020. So we're talking about the, uh, the, uh, home-based businesses now, the, the signs, et cetera?
The home-based businesses.
Okay. So, l- let me start by saying, I live on 7th Street and 7th Avenue. And every morning, I walk on 7th Street all the way down to, I think it's called, uh, Mariner, Mariner. So I pass 7th, 8th, 9th. And what, what I'm noticing is, there's this proliferation in this town, in this city, to get all these home-based businesses, contractors. You have people renting boat space, like five, six boats in their yard, renting parking spaces. And, and they park on the sidewalk with trucks and equipment and generators. And, and you know what I find interesting? Every time I come here and listen to your building department talk about everything they're improving or approving, when you call them to come out and enforce the ordinances, they won't come out. For example, in my neighborhood, and I think it's Mr., uh, Mr. Hay, right? Aren't you 7th, uh, 7th Street, 7th Avenue? Right? How many times have I emailed you about problems in the neighborhood? Crime, violations, et cetera. You have never once responded to me. And what do we have to deal with? Mr. Temple, who, whenever you come here, he gets everything approved. Now, look, now we're going to enjoy all these signs all over town. Massage, a body wrap. What is going on here? What are you turning the city into? Really? You see what these side streets look like now with trucks? You've got people living in a house because of this building department with seven construction trucks in a residential house parked all over the street, all over the lawn, all on the sidewalk, making noise, stinking up things. And what do you commissioners do? You laugh about everything. You, you approve everything. Now we're going to have signs everywhere. You know, wherever you go in this town now, there's signs. What happened to a residential area? Uh, why don't you do it in your area? Instead of in ours? And no matter what you come, you report to the Assistant City Manager, the City Manager, the Building Department, they don't respond to anything. Nothing. And all the violations and all these homeowners associations, you won't come out. You won't write the viol- you won't do anything. That's my time.
That is your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. So I know this wasn't easy for the department as this is preempted by the, the state legislature that requires the cities to do this. Otherwise, we could be sued. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission, Adam Temple, Director of Development. Uh, yes, sir. And it included in the backup, we, we actually included, um, the House Bill, uh, 403 that was adopted by the state legislature and went, went into effect July 1st, um, that essentially, um, is, is forcing us to, to change our land development regulations to be in compliance with statute.
Right. And, uh, yeah, I was there in Tallahassee when it passed. It was like nine o'clock the night for the, the close of the session that, uh, somehow the, the Florida League of Cities thought they got this dismissed, and someone brought it up and attached it to another item, um, after all the hard work that the, the League of Cities did. So that's why we want to make sure that, uh, municipalities are not getting preempted, um, with their home rule to control, uh, the destiny, because we don't, we, we want businesses in business locations and residents in residential locations. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramos?
Yes.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
The votes five-zero.
All right, thank you. And next, we have item 8C, which is three ordinances, ordinance number 22-001, 22-002, 22-003.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, annexing 0.8 acres of land that is contiguous to the city limits within Palm Beach County, and that will, upon annexation, constitute a reasonably compact addition to city boundaries, providing that the proper use designation and proper zoning of the property shall be reflected in separate ordinances to be passed simultaneously herewith, providing for conflicts, severability, providing that this ordinance shall be filed with the Clerk of the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County, Florida, upon adoption and an effective date. Mayor, would you like me to read all three at once?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. The second one is an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 89-38 by amending the future land use element of comprehensive plan for property commonly known as 3518 Ruskin Avenue and described herein, changing the land use designation from Palm Beach County Medium Residential 5 DU AC MR-5 to Office Commercial OC, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And the last one is an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described. amending ordinance zero two dash zero one three to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as thirty five eighteen Ruskin Avenue from single family residential RS to office professional C dash one, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. I list the applicant as Mr. Stephen Seibert, and I have just unmuted him, but he is self muted.
He's actually in the audience.
Oh, my apologies. I do have a PowerPoint. I'll bring it up in a minute.
There's a presentation in the application. I think it's pages.
Right, we're going to have
Seven fifty three to seven seven seven. I don't know if you want all twenty three pages, but it's probably the last four or five that make simplify.
You know, basically what we're going to add request is that you provide us a brief explanation and what you're trying to do. And you can take as much time or as little as much, a little time as you'd like.
Let's do little.
Okay.
As you can see on that graph, it's pointing to a corner lot that's currently multi, its own multifamily residential with the county. It joins the city of Boynton Beach on the east and on the south. We're proposing, it's a vacant lot, zero point eight acres vacant. It's been vacant for, I think, seven or eight years. I'm not sure exactly. But we would, we're proposing putting an office for ourselves. We're an architectural firm here in downtown Boynton Beach on federal highway, and we'd like to annex it into Boynton and make that a nice transition from the large mall project to the residential neighbor on our west and create a single story transition space there.
And do you have frontage along Old Boynton Road?
We do.
Okay, wonderful. So my comments are is that I'm glad we're expanding the city of Boynton Beach and getting new attack space. In addition, that community is, I believe, septic tank. So are we going to have to run a sewer line to your location?
We're proposing a forced main sewer extension.
Okay, and I'll ask, I guess, Andrew here. If we are trying to include the rest of that community from septic to sewer, is that the best thing moving forward?
What do you mean best thing?
Step closer.
Yeah, we're one step closer.
I'm talking about the, the, what is it that you mentioned? The sewer line, forced main extension is the best thing?
Well, the sewer main he's going to extend is going to be to the south. So it won't help us convert that septic to sewer area, but we have infrastructure in the area that will facilitate that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And so that's, that's not on this item, but hopefully we can discuss it shortly thereafter. Does anyone on the commission have any comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty two dash zero zero one?
I move.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz? Commissioner Ramos?
Mm hmm.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Yes, you caught me mid swallow.
Sorry.
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty two dash zero zero two?
A move.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz? Commissioner Ramos?
Aye.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Thank you, aye.
It's five zero.
And ordinance number twenty two dash zero zero three.
I move.
Second.
Ramos? Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz? The vote's five zero.
Thank you. Last, I was hoping to talk about this when we had a big crowd, nine A, because this is over six million dollars worth of funding that we have available to the community. And the big thing that according to the American Rescue Plan Act that we are able to do is called economic mobility. And for me, the the main thing that I would want is bike sharing because I do see people using the dirt bikes and ATVs as micro mobility in our community, and I would want to give them an opportunity to use other forms of legal transportation, like an electric bike, to get from one place to another throughout the city. And the other comments that I'll have before the the presentation is the off highway vehicles location. We currently do not have one in the city of Boynton Beach. However, if we are able to partner with a nonprofit that is able to transport our residents to a location that has off highway vehicle capabilities, that is something that I feel is beneficial for the community. And the other aspect of it is that I did speak to the Bible Church of God as they do have a vacant lot that it may be suitable for off highway vehicles. However, the the community may not appreciate the noise associated with it. The only other place that we have in the city of Boynton Beach with availability is our Eco Park and which is something that the the commission and the community would have to look into to see if they want to, you know, move some of that space from the forty acres to something else. The the issue then becomes how do you get the vehicles to that location safely? And the last is the scholarships, finding ways that we can use this, these funds to help our community do extracurricular activities that we currently have available. And and that's, those are the the things that I would want to see with the American Rescue Plan. But John and Karice? If you like to present?
Yeah, I believe Karice is going to begin the presentation.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city commission. Thank you so much for allowing staff to come before you tonight. We have a brief, I say brief, but we have a presentation that we'd like to go through this evening. We are looking to seek your approval for the notice of funding opportunities that the city commission asked us to put out and for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for nonprofit and for profits subrecipient grant application. We also have a small business grant program, small business technical assistance program, and Boynton Beach Elementary School Program Partnership. Now, these first fifteen slides you have seen before, they are recap of the RA, ARPA process thus far, but I would, with your indulgence, like to run through them just in case there are folks in the audience or watching from home that are not that familiar with ARPA at this point. So, John, could you go to the first?
There's nobody new in the audience.
Oh, okay. Well, anyone watching from home and of course, the city commission.
Absolutely.
So you've seen these slides before, as I said, the American Rescue Plan, the objectives, it was signed into law on March eleventh. Next slide. Okay, and then we have the overview that on May seventeenth, the Secretary of the U.S. Treasury Department issued a internal final rule that had these five objectives for which ARPA funds can be spent. Next slide, please. We've had numerous public meetings, which are listed here, as well as additional public outreach, public surveys, the racial and social equity community needs assessment, newsletters, social media, and networking events. Next slide, please. The approved ARPA master spending plan, next slide. On December seventh, we brought forward a proposed master spending plan budget to the city commission, and these are the dollar amounts that the commission voted to go into each of the five equity pillars or the community assessment priorities, as we're also calling them. Next slide. The competitive notice of funding opportunity, the NOFO and city intergovernmental partnership initiatives are what we will be reviewing this evening. Next slide. Approved ARPA master plan, spending plan priority description. So these next five slides, and we can just go through them, you've seen them all before, have a basic description of what this one, economic stability and resilience. And then at the very bottom, we have examples of some initiatives that would foot underneath each one of those community assessment priorities. So we have economic stability, next slide. Housing affordability and homeownership, next slide. Educational opportunities and job skills development, next slide. Healthcare access and health outcomes, next slide, and criminal justice and safety. So if we go to the next slide, ARPA funding, next slide. You've seen this spreadsheet before. This is the funding and encumbered funding that the city has already spent for ARPA, the housing study tutoring program, wellness program, and so on. If you have any questions, please feel free to just stop me as we're going through. But we are now getting into the meat of the presentation, the draft ARPA NOFO and partnership initiatives. So we have for your review, the ARPA nonprofit and for profit subrecipient grant application, the ARPA Small Business Assistance Grant Program Administration, partnership initiative, which is the ARPA Small Business Technical Assistance Program, and another partnership initiative, which would be the ARPA Boynton Beach Elementary School Programs. And you can see the numbers that we, the amounts that we are proposing be allocated for each one of these. Next slide. Okay, so if I could take a moment now just to go over the notice of funding opportunity for the nonprofit and for profit subrecipient grant application, I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review it. And the basics of this grant application, you have an overview, which is the description of the recovery plan. The section also includes an application checklist for submission documentation, the subrecipient grant scoring criteria, certifications and affirmations that must be read and signed by the legal representative of the applicant or the applicant's organization. After that, we have general information. And then into section B for the proposed project. We're asking for brevity here, just to concisely describe the project. There are areas where they can add additional information later on in the grant application. Number C is the strategy. So there are five funding priorities, and we've attached an appendix A, which refer to the community assessment priorities and potential eligible programs under each. Now, this is not an exhaustive list, but it gives people an idea of what type of programs can be funded. Under D, we're asking for the project summary. So the first part of this section provides a detailed description. This is where they can get into the meat of what this program, project activity is that they would like to be funded. We're also looking for a plan of action for them to explain in detail how the agency and specifically who in the agency is going to implement the activities. We're asking them to be very specific how the ARPA funds are proposed to be used. The following set of questions afterwards are very self explanatory. Next area is goals, objectives, and activity measures. We're asking that those be filled out completely. There is room for two goals and three objectives under each goal. The applicant does not have to create additional goals if they don't have them. Or if they have more than two goals, they are able to submit additional sheets of paper with those goals, objectives, and activity measures. Section E gets into a project budget. This is the justification for funding request. We're asking
Karice?
Yes, sir. Yes.
There's no video of what you're talking about. And so
Is there a presentation? Is that under a presentation, Karice? Because right now we have blank slides.
Right, so proposed notice of funding up. So yeah, unless the the actual application is part of the the presentation, you know, reading the application.
Okay, it was attached to the backup, and if you like, we can put that on the screen. If you don't need this additional information, I can go forward through the rest of the slides, which is basically detailing each one of the documents that were attached to your agenda item.
I think Mayor, this David Scott. I think if you go back to slide, John, if you go back to slide seventeen. Take us back to slide seventeen, John.
Karice, you know, I kind of want the timeline so that we know what's going on. Because like I mentioned, the most of the people in the audience are not here. I know that there are people there virtually, but they're not able to to follow unless they downloaded the agenda with the backup.
Okay, so if you want to go to slide twenty, John, that gives us the timeline for the mayor? Okay, so if if the council and what we are looking for tonight is approval of the documents that were attached, if the council approves everything as is, then we hope to advertise the NOFOs this Friday, January seventh. We'll be holding a pre proposal workshop, January thirteenth. The proposal deadline is going to be February fourth, and then the review team will have the proposed evaluations completed by the fifteenth and bring back to the city commission on March first, the NOFO recommended awards based on a very specific rating and ranking criteria, which is built into the body of the grant application.
Okay.
One thing I did want to mention, sir, is that when you're looking at the Small Business Assistance Grant, we're not only asking for approval for the actual grant submittal because we're looking for an entity that will administer the Small Business Assistance Grant for the city. But the actual program for Small Business Assistance Grants is is something that the council has not yet approved. So we would like to get approval for both the program and the notice of funding opportunity grant application to be able to put out on the street, January seventh, along with the nonprofit subrecipient grant.
So, Karice, you kind of overstepped what the the Small Business Technical Assistance Program grant is. That is the FAU Tech Runway for small businesses, and that is an education program that we're having here in our new innovation space.
So what we did is that we had it timed so that I would go, I would go over the first grant and then John Jorgan.
Karice.
Well.
I'm trying to in the meeting. I'd like to let John explain what the the Small Business Technical Assistance Program is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, John Jorgan, Economic Development Manager. Thank you, Karice, as well. So the So the Small Business Technical Assistance Program is a actual partnership with FAU Tech Runway. And the the partnership is going to be a direct funding request to to support local entrepreneurs, small businesses, and employees. The total ask for the program is going to be $60,000. The funding is going to go directly towards scholarships for 100 individuals to participate in two of FAU Tech Runway's training programs. That's going to be their market validation program, as well as their entrepreneurship boot camp. The total cost to participate in both of those programs is $600 per person. So with the 600 plus the 100 participants, there's your $6,000. The goal of this program is going to be to provide locals, Boynton Beach entrepreneurs and small business owners who have been economically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic to access personalized technical training programs. The pandemic has impacted not only small business owners, but entrepreneurs looking to start a business by making it difficult to access credit, losing expected startup capital, as well as the overall increase in the cost to start a business. We believe these training programs will help businesses develop strategies to mitigate the worst effects of the pandemic, reach new customers, and connect businesses to potential funding opportunities. These two programs are going to cover topics such as writing an effective business plan, how to deliver value to your customer, how to pitch a plan to investors, how to create a valuable marketing plan, and how to project sales revenues and expenses, just to name a few. But both of these training programs are intensive, and they do provide a comprehensive understanding of entrepreneurship, as well as business development. The participants will get out of the program of what they put in. So we figured, you know, providing access to valuable tools and resources is an effective way to help our businesses. And if you want more details about the the two programs, I do have Jessica Beaver and Regina Thompson on from FAU Tech Runway. I do believe they're still on virtually. They can answer any specific questions about those programs. But creating this program answered those questions to to help startups, as well as those established businesses. We weren't able to provide direct funding and seed funding for startups. But we thought this is the the next best way we could help those those businesses that were looking to start up during the pandemic, but couldn't, but also help those existing businesses that really navigate some of the worst effects of the pandemic and help, you know, reinvent their business.
All right. I'd like, you know, not necessarily now the the explanation, but when we have the applications for the entrepreneurs to come out. Because I'm sure it's not just, you know, I'm sure first come, first served. But we have to give everyone that equal opportunity to apply. And at that time, we'll ask them to better explain what, you know, during announcements, what that program is. And then, does anybody from the commission have any questions regarding the FAU Tech Runways program? If not, you want to discuss the the school partnership?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Mayor. As well as the partnership with FAU Tech Runway, we're also requesting the commission to approve a partnership with three of our local elementary schools. The city reached out and met with all the principals of our local elementary schools and discussed the possible funding opportunities for the ARPA. We asked each school to send us a project charter for their projects that were eligible for ARPA under the ARPA guidelines that the schools did not already have funding for these programs. Freedom Shores, Forest Park, and Citrus Cove Elementary Schools responded and sent and sent us their charters. Freedom Shores submitted for a STEM club. Forest Park submitted for an enrichment program. And Citrus Cove submitted for a STEAM classroom. So the total, the total amount we're requesting for these three projects is going to be $43,500. The breakdown of the costs and a more detailed description of these projects can be found in your backup. And we've been in constant communication with the principals. And if you would like a more detailed response, I'll be more than happy to send that to you tomorrow.
All right. John, do we not the drum line for Portiana? Did did Ms. McDowell just not have a chance to get something in yet?
Yeah.
So, and I think that's part of it, them being very, very busy as well. But and I'd just like to know if that's something the commission would want to consider. When we went over for read for the record, I had a long chat with the principal. And one of the things that they focus so much on is their STEM program without really any arts and music. And they want to start up a music program with, namely with a drum line, I think like Galaxy has. And it was about $5,000. And they were, and I think we determined this is an eligible. It would be eligible under ARPA in terms of enrichment and arts. So I I'll reach out to Ms. McDowell. I'm sure it was more of a time thing, but is that something that the commission would be willing to add into that as well and support that?
Yeah.
It was a great idea.
The the question, though, it becomes is that did the school district also receive ARPA funds?
Yes, and I I need to rely on you and what conversations you guys have had with the district. You know, whether they're going to fund this, I don't.
And I'm.
So, you know, the, you know, they're not, you know, they they understand there's a finite aspect of funding. And so we want to try to find a way so that we can maximize the the city's funding to part with a partnership with the school district. I may lean on Commissioner Katz to see if he has any context at the school district to, you know, see what they're doing with other municipalities or other, you know, schools so that we can be a part of that and not solely fund all the different aspects of that public schooling. One of the things that I want to know is that a part of my community support funds, I worked with Freedom Shores and the Boynton Beach Garden Club to have a outdoor learning area. And I want to know if that's something that we could hopefully expand with the American Rescue Plan Act for outdoor learning areas with the the different public schools. You know, and that's a question that I guess is to you, Karice.
Could you repeat the question, please, Mayor?
So an outdoor learning area because of the the aspects of COVID-19 with indoor learning.
You're wanting to know if that's something that's an eligible use?
Correct. To have outdoor facilities available with our school districts.
Anything that has.
An education.
So it's 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 for a outdoor nature and learning about the environment area.
Right. So so going going back to the educational slide, all of these type of educational opportunities are eligible as long as we can connect the dots back to it mitigating a negative impact or it is servicing a disproportionately impacted community or census tract. So if if you can logically connect the dots that it is tied to mitigating the negative impacts of COVID, then yes, that educational opportunity would be eligible.
Is Freedom Shores Title I?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone, everyone.
All of our elementaries, right, right, and Citrus Cove isn't.
Correct. And I did get a message from Natalie Cromwell. Citrus Cove Elementary would be very grateful for this funding to help students experience hands-on, real-world experiences in a STEAM classroom. So I'm excited. The one thing that I saw with the application, the the checklist that everyone needed, you know, it said a Boynton Beach BTR or exempt from a Boynton Beach BTR. It's kind of like we would also want to see if they're in Delray or in unincorporated Palm Beach County that they have a BTR in general so that they're not just a, not registered with a municipality or locale or without the county. So I just wanted to make that amendment to that line so that the the BTR, if they don't have a BTR, explain why, instead of just saying that they're exempt from City of Boynton Beach because they have an address outside.
Yeah, no problem.
And then I'll ask the commission if they have any other comments regarding this before we issue the the timeline and approve the the scholarships with FAU Tech Runway and the the school coordination programs.
Maybe take that from the forty-three, just to round it to fifty. That'll include five for the drum line, too, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, that works.
And the NOFO application.
Correct. And that's something where we want to partner with the the school district and the county so that if we are able to say we're putting in the the million dollars for homeownership, we'd want them to match it here in Boynton Beach as well.
Any chance we can to layer it and or match?
Yeah. So, and so I guess. Let me look. Timeline. So at the January eighteenth meeting, can we get an update of all that came to the pre-proposal workshops? Just a little update of all the nonprofits that are looking to apply and see if they have any questions?
Absolutely.
Yes, we we can put that on future agenda for you, sir.
Okay. Excellent.
John, you've been sending out, have we sent out, I know, emails to all of the nonprofits? Did we do it on a weekly or did you send more than one to say, hey, keep your head up or no, we're talking about this?
We sent one to our nonprofit list, and we sent one to our overall BTR list. It does include those nonprofits again, so they probably got it twice.
Then we'll continue doing that.
Absolutely.
Proposal workshop and everything.
Yeah.
All right. So may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Any other comments or questions from the the community or audience? Mr. McNally, would you like to have a few words?
Mayor Grant, there is a comment from Natalie Cromwell.
Yep, thank you. I read it into the record.
Okay, thank, okay.
Hi, Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Unit four of seven, Boynton Beach. So I I come to all, most of the meetings, if not all the meetings, and I listen to the situation all over the country in terms of COVID and the impact. And what I find interesting is that this group of commissioners, council, et cetera, et cetera, seem to be very concerned with all the entrepreneurs in Boynton Beach. And and then we look at the budget and where our taxes go. And we have a city manager that makes a quarter million dollars a year. We have, I'm sorry to say that.
It's public.
I know it's public. I was at the meeting. I can't believe they approved it. That's a lot of money.
Every penny, thank you.
A quarter million dollars a year.
My job for a day. I'd love you to chat.
Can I tell you, I would do that job for, I I would do that job for nothing for this city. And I'm sure I would do a good job. I'll volunteer. Quarter million dollars. And and you know what? You know what's funny? You know, you've got so many disadvantaged families here and problems with housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And all you talk about is entrepreneurs and these bars and these clubs. And, you know, it just doesn't, I mean, who cares? Why don't we care about just the average people here? That's where the money should go. Now, I, I, you know, you guys are are just, I don't know what it's called, civil capitalists out of control. You think everything is about money. And 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 we're paying taxes and we have to pay you. And then you take money from the government that should go to the average people. And you guys think everything is funny. Everything's funny, but all you do is give money to all the bars and clubs around town. And and you think that that's the way you're going to help. And listen to the way this meeting started tonight. What's not in this city for children, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. How quickly you forget, you move on to the next stage of the meeting, and we're right back to all the money for all these clubs and all these developers and all these architects and all these engineers, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And I did get a comment regarding, is this commission spending all of the American Rescue Plan Act funding? Or allocating it?
That's up to you, depending on the responses we get to the applications. And then the the level of funding, that is really going to be totally up to the commission on how much of it you want to allocate and what kind of responses and requests we get.
Okay. Commissioner Katz?
Question from Mr. Durgan. Just to be clear, these entrepreneurs are human beings that reside in the city of Boynton Beach seeking to start businesses, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And so, thank you for that. And so it's something that, when is it, what, March first is when the the out, we can just start deciding the allocation to the different nonprofits. And if we don't decide all the full allocation of the the six to seven million dollars, then it will be up to the newly elected commission. And so it's something we'll we'll have to decide whether, you know, all the different nonprofits, because we could say, you know, similar to the community support funds, if we don't spend it, then someone else can. Yes.
Mayor, I did get a question. I think it was similar or along the same vein as what you were asking. It was from a resident asking, are both, I believe, he means trenches, but, or he says trenches. Are both trenches of spending decided before the new commission on March, March eighth? So.
There there is the possibility that that happens.
Yeah.
But it's it's a possibility that it doesn't happen.
Correct.
All right. And I do get a question. It's from Monica Cleckley. How do you access the application or funds for nonprofit only? Where will the application be?
So the application are going to be posted on the city's ARPA webpage. That's boynton-beach.org/ARPA.
Okay, so they're going to be on the city's website. Information will be at our library for if anybody needs to to use the internet. And no, they are for nonprofits and for-profit corporations.
Correct.
Under the 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 pillars that we put out.
And if somebody just goes to our home website, they would still have a link that they could, that could take them to the application. Thank you.
And so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, before the commission leaves, there's four things for future agenda items. One is I got invited to go to the Taiwan. And I'd like to to have a discussion on the next city commission meeting. Their deadline is the seventeenth, but that's a holiday because they're asking for a delegation. And so if there's anyone from the city that would want to go. And I don't know if I'm going to be mayor, and I still can go. But like I happened in 2016, I would want approval with the condition that no city funding would go for my travel or expenses. In addition, I spoke with a developer, Hyperion Group, regarding density. And they are looking into, and and I would like the the commission to get a better understanding of how the acreage is determined for density. So we're not saying that they go above the hundred units per acre, but seeing if the middle road on city roadways is acceptable in our land development regulations. So for example, for the one fourteen North Federal Highway project, if they can include half of Northeast Sixth Street as part of their calculation, if our land development regulations allow. So I kind of want a determination of what our land development regulations say regarding the property acreage allocation. Is that okay? Commissioner Katz?
You're just asking for staff to weigh in on whether or not that is permissible at this time?
Correct. To see, you know, you know, if they're asking for a rewrite of our land development regulations comprehensive plan, that's something that I don't know if this commission wants to do. But I just need, we need to have more information to see because I don't feel abandoning the road and then taking it, you know, getting permission to get, take it back is the best route.
So I have no problem if they have a question for staff relative to our existing rules and regulations. What I would not support is any effort to change anything or agree to anything prior to a site plan and all the perspective of a specific project. This isn't some citywide concern that that they would be voicing, so.
It it may deal with other aspects of density. So for example, Northeast Third Avenue is a city road, but they may have a mixed-use project that would want that extra half of the roadway, an extra ten to ten feet, so to speak, along a project to be included in the calculation.
But they want to count city property to increase their ability to build units.
So technically, whether it's city property or it's an easement that the city has over the median property line, because the question is, is what, who owns the, you know, the roadway? Is it the city that owns it? Or is the property owner owns it to the middle and the city has an easement over it? So that's kind of where I would want a clarification, what our land development regulations say. And to see if, you know, and that's up to the commission then, if it allows it to. And to see if, you know, and that's up to the commission then, if it allows it to allow them to have that extra density. Based not over the, so it's not going above a hundred units per acre, but it's making a determination, is it to the sidewalk? Is it to the road? Is it to the middle of a city road? To make the determination for the property acreage.
Is that for next meeting, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I think stuff, yeah. And I may have them reach out to if they need some clarification.
Yep. And then the the items H, I'd like to change the renaming to Fire Station One after speaking to Latasha Clements and not the Urban Orchard. Yes.
Given the fact that this entire controversy started with the personalization of art on a city building and a terrible decision subsequent to that by a former employee, I do not think lending names to public facilities, unless it's a memorial or things like that, is, I mean, a prudent idea. And that's just my initial thought.
All right. Yeah, I I spoke to Ms. Clements, I spoke to the IAFF, and so that's where they they requested, and we have plenty of named facilities for the community. Most of all of our parks are named, or half of them, and so I feel honoring people that have grew up in Boynton Beach and worked in Boynton Beach should have recognition. So if you don't want to change the item from Urban Orchard to to the Fire Station One, you know, I'm requesting that the commission make, you know, to have that discussion at the next meeting.
And Mayor, just to, you know, something to think about is of the eight hundred and fifty employees we have, we've had numerous employees that have started at an entry-level position and grown and succeeded through this organization to become high-level, higher-level employees. There's more than one. And just just to keep that in mind, we have many success stories that way.
Absolutely. And so this is something where I'm asking the the commission to have the discussion. If they don't want to have a discussion on it, that's fine, and we can keep it as the Urban Orchard.
Well, can we just have the discussion when it's time to have the discussion?
Yes, I would prefer that.
Okay, so I I'd like it for the the next meeting to naming a city facility for Latasha Clements as the the item to discuss.
So I have an idea to share, but I'll I'll wait until then.
Thank you.
And then the next thing is Mayor Grant has requested a discussion on creating a citizens' review committee. I'd like to change that to a citizens' engagement committee. The police issue crime statistics every month, and so I'd like to have an advisory board, have a discussion or a possible advisory board to go over the crime statistics with the police so that there is a more engagement with the the police on the community's terms rather than having just the coffee with the cop, the the shop with the cop, the lunch with the law enforcement officer. I remember when I got, when I was running and our first year as the mayor, our chief had quarterly meetings throughout the the city, and the fact that we have this huge community room at the police department, I would want to have that opportunity for the for an advisory board to make recommendations to the commission.
Mayor, I'm 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 okay with all of that. Again, these are all items in the future agenda. Can we just have those discussions when we get there? It's been a long night.
Oh, yeah. No, this this is just renaming it as citizens' engagement committee instead of citizens' review.
In light of the conversations that have been had tonight and the comments stated by members of the public about personal infractions with our officers and things that they did not even feel comfortable to address or report, I I think it would be important to have some type of committee of this stature that perhaps would give them a safe place to feel that they can comment on some of these things. So I'm I'm not opposed to that at all. I'm just, right now, I'm I'm tired. So let's wrap it up.
All right. That's it. That's the case. Would you mind having, John, can we have a closing?
Yes. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, we thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Thank you. And Chief Gregory?